Good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock. Give or take. Call the meeting to order. We do have a full board this evening. Can anyone's recorded? Were they recording? Would they make it known? First order of business is minutes for the May eighth meeting? If you've all had a chance to review them.
This is two and three. Faces two and three.
No, just one. The special.
That's different than mediation. Mediation, I think we're going to definitive on one, two, and three and just plan on one.
I'll check again.
I mean, with the amount of time that's surpassed, I would think they'd be able to do them all.
Yes, just be apparently. Anyone care to make a motion on the minutes of May eighth?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for May eighth as written.
Can I get a second?
In the section seven A, Bay Point indicates the decision deadline is June 26th, I think. The actual decision deadline is July 31st.
That's correct. Yeah, but.
Where's that? Line seven what, A?
In the chat, it's got the previous deadline as listed as June 26th. On the, on A, on the upcoming hearings. On B, it's got June, July 31st.
So we should take out decision deadline.
Yeah, just scratch decision deadline on that block.
I second with that change.
Anything else? Any other comments? Motion is to accept as corrected. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Very good. Next item is an A and R for Highland Inc., Glen Charlie Road.
Hi, for the record, my name is Mike Mental with J.C. Engineering. And what we're doing here is we're subdividing a large parcel land located on Glen Charlie Road. Currently, there's an existing home that sits on the property. What we're proposing to do is to divide this parcel land into three individual lots. Lot one will be dedicated for the existing dwelling located on the property. Lot two would be the northern lot that abuts that property. And then finally, we have lot three. All three lots are located within the R-130 zoning district, which requires 130,000 square feet of land and 200 feet of frontage. All three lots have a minimum of 200 feet of frontage and over 130,000 square feet of land. And there are wetlands located on the parcel as well. But all three parcels have at least 80% of upland area located within them. So with that, I would take any questions.
Where is lot three?
Lot three is the one.
Oh, back there.
On the east side. Yep. We show an index plan.
Huh?
Eighty percent's not contiguous. That's not eighty percent of that lot.
Mr. Sullivan, we don't have the minimum.
Correct notations, yeah?
Yes.
Glen Charlie.
Charlie.
How much is that on lot two? Number seventy-three.
Plus. Any questions?
Does the existing garage remain?
Yes, actually, that existing garage will remain as of right now. Whether or not they tear it down, once the, once the lot gets subdivided, I don't know. They may tear it down and put up a new home. But right now, as it stands, that existing garage will remain on lot two.
How are they going to get access to that buildable lot on lot two in the back? I see the buildable circle is way in the back on the backside of that wetland.
Yep. The, the access to the property is going to be from Glen Charlie Road. That lot-shaped circle doesn't need to be within the access portion of the property. It just says it needs to be within the parcel land.
So you're crossing the wetlands to get there, right?
No, we're not going to be building anything beyond that point. Everything is going to be built near the existing garage.
But they can build it there as long as they meet, as long as you meet the setbacks, you can build where that shed area is, correct?
Correct.
What's the, what's the point of this access road? South of lot one?
Yep. The, the owner wishes to keep that access for the potential of subdividing his property in the future if he decides to do so.
Subdividing lot three?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Is that stretched right now? That's in here. It doesn't show it on the loggers.
What does that mean?
Uh, the. Lot two was that?
So they just break, they see break over here also.
Part of another. Lot, I don't remember that frontage being connected with this property before. Was that another? Was that part of this?
Lot two. Yeah, new lot two is part of the entire combined lots, if you will. Yes.
The question was, what was the lot in before?
Was it part of one of the abutters' properties or was it part of this?
No, it's part of the, the homeowner's ownership of the entire parcel land.
So it may have just been.
So you have a lot shape factor for lot two, but you can't get to it?
No, we don't plan on crossing the wetlands to get to that lot shape area. We just need to show that the lot shape factor can fit on the property without encroaching over the property line or over the wellin line. And that's what we're showing there. But the actual building envelope of, of the property is going to be all within, you know, 150 feet of the roadway.
That's, that's a deception.
So the lot shape factor is just sort of like a, that doesn't make any difference?
The, the way the zoning regulations read, you just have to be able to show the circle on the lot and make sure it doesn't cross the proper line or cross the wetland.
You don't have proper access.
And that's. You can do that. And I'll put that on the list for the zoning committee. I mean, there's no point in having a lot shape factor if it, if it's meaningless. This is absolutely.
There's no access to, there's no access to the lot unless you fly across the wetlands, right?
Yeah. And, and you say that's the, that's the zoning requirement for lot shape factor. It doesn't have to have any meaning in relation to the construction of the, who you're going to build?
That's an abstract interpretation, I think of it.
In a roundabout way, it has to fit on the lot. So they want, they're showing it over there, but they're going to build it over here.
But it doesn't have access.
Right.
Unless they're going to put a bridge across the wetlands.
Or is it from lot three?
But the also, the planning board also has the authority to waive the lot shape factor if you feel that it meets the intent of the.
The, the reason the lot, lot fit shape factor came into play was because of, how can I put it? I'm trying to be nice. Constructive engineering, okay? Very abstract, you know, pork chop lots and all the other stuff.
Yep.
We're going right back to where we were before.
Well, not, not really. The, the area that they're pointing out to is lot two that is along Glen Charlie Road is consistent with the other lots on Glen Charlie Road, if not a little bigger.
The portion that have, that has access or access to the buildable lot doesn't fit the, the definition of a buildable lot.
How close is it, Mike? Where the garage is, where the existing garage is?
Oh, it's only here. Yeah, 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 yeah. That lot shape factor will not fit. No, it won't fit here.
We were talking about maybe fifteen, 20 feet or so. The way, the way the, when I, when I read the regulation concerning the lot shape factor, I had a conversation with Mr. Buckland as well about that because that's one of the points, that's one of the questions I had. But there's nothing in the regulations that says that that lot shape factor needs to be put on the property where the access is going to be. We, we think that we can build a home on lot two, everything north of the wellin line. It's going to comply with all zoning requirements. It has two, over 200 feet of frontage along the roadway. We'll be able to conform to the minimum setback requirements. And we're not crossing the wetlands to get to the backyard of the property at all.
I don't have a compass on me, but I think that factor comes pretty close to fitting where they're intending to.
Fifteen feet maybe, it's just 20 feet. Sixty-three thousand feet, you can still put out some acid.
Well, the area where they're proposing the structure here, at least 15,000 square feet. It's just the odd shape. I wouldn't classify it as a hockey stick lot. It might meet, meet the pork chop description, but.
Yeah, the, the closest point between the corner of the lot between lot two and lot one to the northern lot line of lot two is 87 feet. So we're shy by about 13 feet, but.
Questions?
Could we get some input from Mr. Rowley?
I think clearly the intent of that circle was to put it somewhere within the buildable area. It reads that the lot should be shaped so that they contain within the buildable upland area a circle of a diameter not less than the frontage requirements of the zoning district in which it's located. So I would assume that if they go to the building inspector, they're going to point to that area that's next to Glen Charlie Road to say, that's our buildable area. So in order to not have to comply with that circle, as it says under 615, you do have the authority to waive this requirement if you feel that it's not detrimental to the intent of the regulation. However, I think there's another section of the bylaw that might be more appropriate, and that's 612. It says in all zoning districts, no principal building should be erected on any lot which has less than 80% of the minimum required lot area as contiguous upland. Eighty percent of. Three acres is 104,000 square feet. I don't think there's 104,000 square feet in that first piece. I don't have a calculator or a scale here. I got a smaller plan. Less than 104,000 in that upland area between Glen Charlie Road and the wetland, where the wetland segregates the rest of the upland, then I would say it doesn't comply with the bylaw. If you add up the upland area in the back to the upland area in the front, you'll get more than 104,000, but it's not contiguous with what's up against Glen Charlie Road.
We've had this issue before in another, I remember another one was the same way.
As a matter of fact, it says upland area that's 63,000, so you're roughly 40,000 square feet shy of it being contiguous there. 612, George.
But it's, so it doesn't say the lot can't be created. It just says it's unbuildable.
Eighty percent of this guy here. This lot, the whole lot. This lot has no access. You can't get to it. So, so it's pie in the sky type. That's why we came up with a lot shape factor to try to stop shit like this.
If it's unbuildable, it should be so noted on the plan.
As a, as a form A though, Kim, we can't do that. We can't condition a form A.
Well, you, you have the disclaimer that endorsement of this should not be construed as a determination of conformance with zoning regulations for all lots affected. And there should be something simpler where it says not to be construed as creating a buildable lot.
On that documentation should be written across that lot, that that lot is not a buildable lot, period. But we can't say for them to put that on there because that's demanded in the condition. Can't put a condition on the form A. Once we, once we go and we release this, we say, okay, we approved this form A, they're going to build a house in that lot wherever they want to build it. That's what's going to happen. That's why we came up with a lot shape factor to start with, to stop this kind of garbage. You know, it's.
You might want to readjust? Because I would believe the intent would be to market this as a buildable lot. Right now, it doesn't look like you've got one.
Would that be up to the building inspector, though?
Building inspector's going to look at a piece of paper. It, it doesn't say it's not a buildable lot, so he's going to say, fine, we're going to build it from it and go on. You know, this is the same game that gets played all the time. That's why the lot shape factor came into play. And you've got two choices. We can either deny it or you can withdraw and come back and mark on it it's not a buildable lot.
Right, but that, that lot shape factor, how I read it, I didn't see anything in there that talks about the lot shape circle needs to be within the accessible area of the property.
This is outside of the lot shape factor. This is another section of the bylaw.
The contiguous upland?
It's the percentages, yeah.
One appears to be okay. That upland area is 125,000 and 80% of the three acres is 104,000, so that's more than adequate for that. Lot three certainly does, so there's no issue with that.
Lot two has upland area of 110,568 and contiguous within the area of the lot shape factor. So the, the basis for this, for saying denial of this one would be that the upland area and the lot shape factor are not accessible except across the wellin?
This is sleaze bag.
110,568.
And then 63, 759 over here.
Right, and in 63, 759 where they presumably would actually build.
If the applicant could show that he could get a building permit over in that area where the circle is by crossing the wetland somehow, then you would have a buildable lot.
Yeah, whether or not we actually cross the wetlands to get to that buildable area, that upland area, or we decide, the homeowner decides that he wants to put an easement over onto lot three from Glen Charlie Road and cut through his property to get access to that area where the 110,000 square foot upland area is located.
Then does that affect his 200-foot of frontage?
If he. It would be just an easement. It would be just an easement.
Yeah.
[inaudible]
[inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible]
The only thing that affects, that I, my read, the only thing that affects the creation of the lot is six fifteen. Six twelve deals with whether it's buildable or not, but...
Well, six fifteen does too. There's all lots created for building purposes.
That's what I mean. That's the only one that refers to the creation of the lot that would, you know, because otherwise it has, it has frontage and area. I think we have grounds to deny it and I on the frontage and area. The determination of whether it's buildable or not doesn't affect the ability of it to be a lot unless you go to six fifteen and says all lots created after a certain date.
[inaudible] 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 [inaudible]
I don't know what the difference is. If you say no principal building can be erected, that's the same thing as saying it's not a buildable lot.
[inaudible]
But it's not saying it's not a lot. It's, you know, it can be created, it's just not under this, under that regulation, it's not a buildable lot.
Yeah, but the plan doesn't say it's not a buildable lot.
Right.
Well, six twelve also says that, George. It says no principal building should be erected on any lot created after the effective date of this bylaw, which was back in two thousand and four.
Which means you can still create them that don't meet it, you just can't build on it, right?
That's true.
If it said it's not a buildable lot, then I don't have a problem with this. But the plan doesn't say that.
Well, wouldn't that be covered under the endorsement, number, note number five? The endorsement of the planning board doesn't construe that it is, you know, in conformance of the zoning regs or all lots affected.
Yeah, but if we look at it and know it's not a buildable lot, then it'd be inappropriate to sign a plan indicating that it's a buildable lot when in fact it's not. We might miss something, and in which case the notation, you know, we're not, you know, the decision maker on that, it's fine, but in this case...
If that was labeled as a parcel...
You'd normally label it as a parcel, or is it not a buildable lot?
Right. But the only way that can happen is, plan has to go back and has to be re-applied, or we're gonna deny it the way it is. It's eighty percent of the to, of the total.
Mm-hmm. Not much of that.
So total area is two hundred and eighty-nine.
Under football, it's eighty percent.
[inaudible]
[inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible] It appears you could modify the line between lots one and two, so you could put a circle in both parcels in the upland area adjacent to Glen Charlie Road. Is that a possibility?
I'd certainly take a look at that, but you guys mentioned about the total upland area of that lot two close to Glen Charlie Road needing to be the eighty percent. There's no way that I can make that eighty percent.
Between the two lots?
Yeah, between lot one and, between Glen Charlie Road and the back edge of the, of the wetland, there's no way that I can make that upland area eighty percent of the, of the one hundred and thirty thousand square feet requirement.
I think it has to be eighty percent of the contiguous upland of that particular part of the lot.
Eighty percent of the minimum lot area, which is eighty percent of three acres.
It's three acres, yeah.
There's only a hundred and eighty...
That's a hundred and four thousand, roughly.
Yeah. And he's only got a hundred and eighty-six thousand square feet to work with.
Yeah, minimum required lot area is contiguous.
Contiguous from the road or just contiguous on the property? Because I can, I can attain the, the required upland area on the backside of that lot number two and perhaps get a lot-shaped circle on the front end of lot number two, if that would satisfy the board. Because at that point, I'd have my required contiguous upland area on the property, and I'll have my lot shape factor within the buildable access portion of the property on Glen Charlie Road.
Where are you gonna acquire that from again?
The lot shape factor would go where lot number two, where it says lot number two right on the plan. I'd put a lot shape factor there. It would meet the two-hundred-feet diameter, and then my total contiguous upland area would be on the backside of the lot on the other side of the wetland.
No, that don't work.
It's not contiguous, though.
Well, it's not contiguous from the access point, but I, the regulations, I don't believe, says that it needs to be contiguous from the actual access roadway. It just says it needs to be contiguous on the lot itself. Otherwise, that, this lot number two wouldn't be a buildable lot.
Do you know what the contiguous access, the contiguous upland area is on lot two?
Well, it's, it's separated, it's bisected by the wetland, so I have sixty, almost sixty-four thousand on the side closest to the Glen Charlie Road, and then I got a hundred and ten thousand on the backside of that wetland.
Yeah.
Which is a total of what it said before. But you can't get it.
They keeping the existing building, existing...
On lot number one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You did mention access from lot three, though.
Could do that through an easement, sure.
That would... Would that meet the two... Either way, I think you hit up a relief, zoning relief to make that buildable.
Maybe cut that a lot over here.
You know, this could be easement, this could be, you could pick up that area.
And lot three is maybe for future development, but possibly quite a ways down the road.
Exactly, exactly.
I believe when originally, I think that wetlands was a result of a previous development. For, this is the same piece where, I think there were seventeen lots proposed around it, if memory serves me correctly.
They all ran from front to rear. Glen Charlie Road right to the back boundary line originally, yeah.
I seem to remember one that circled around. Is that further down, or is that this one?
That's, that's because of that fifty-foot odd-shaped piece. That's a part of an old road layout.
Old road they used going across, right. Yeah.
As a matter of fact, I think that plan was rescinded.
Not that long ago, too.
Yeah. Just to get rid of the road.
Well, I'm just looking at lot three. I mean, what is the proposed roadway in for access to subdivide that later? Is that what you're trying to do?
If he decides to do in the future, sure. He needs that access point, because you need two means of egress.
To get at, yeah.
That's a big chunk, too.
Seventy-nine acres.
Yeah.
Yeah, seventy-nine acres.
That's gonna be some division.
Lot of wetland. Lot of wetland, lot of land.
Yeah, a little bit of that there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we'll put the ball in his court. He can either take it back or we'll deny it.
Charlie, does he meet the eighty percent where he's got the lot-shaped factor circle now?
Yeah, because that, where it says upland area, near that circle, it says one hundred and ten thousand. One hundred and four is the eighty percent of the three acres.
It's easier for you to show an easement to get into there, because you're not gonna make it size-wise in the front.
Can you count the frontage if you can't use the frontage?
Well...
Frontage has to provide access to the, to the building.
Well, can, can he use the frontage for that? I mean, if he can't use this, if he can't use that for this, why can he use this for that? I'm lost. I don't get it.
Well, if this is access, it's here.
Yeah. And it's not buildable, so how's he get to there?
I can get there, but that, this part of the lot doesn't have, the building part doesn't have access.
That's right. That's right. So he's, he's trying to read the statute one way that says, if this is one lot, I've got enough size, I can put the house here, but he physically had to show it there. If he's gonna leave it there, then he needs to have access and easement through to get to it.
But then, but then the section doesn't have, there's no frontage.
Well, it has, it has.
Good analogy you can use for that is think about getting an island in the middle of the lake. You have no access to that island, but you're gonna say it's a buildable lot.
How deep's the water?
It's only a bog, they can fill it in. Everybody go four-wheel drive now, so...
I don't know, Mike, that's a toughie to... What do you think, Charlie?
So that does a couple of things, but go ahead, George.
That does meet... I mean, there's no connection between where you build and where you... He's met his eighty percent there of contiguous.
Does he have to meet his frontage requirement? Or can that be something that he can get special... [inaudible]
I think when both of these were written, it was clearly expected that it would apply to situations where you created a lot, such as what's on Glen Charlie Road, and that that would be the building area, and that eighty percent of the minimum would be right there.
Right.
That was what the intent was. And the same thing for the circle. That's, that's what the intent for that was. The language perhaps is a little loose, so it allows somebody with a little imagination to create something like this. It's, it's hard to say that, without taking the position that it was intended that it be subject to what's on Glen Charlie Road, but it's not written that way. One thing would be to, I guess, endorse it as approval not required with these statements on here, write letters to the building inspectors, pointing it out to them, and let him make the interpretation. He is the zoning enforcement officer and the one who makes an interpretation as to whether a lot is buildable. That's one option. The second option would be to withdraw that and go for variance on lot two. Because if you look around lot two, anywhere from that point northerly on Glen Charlie Road, or if you look from that point southerly and look at the lots, if you look on this key map, most of those lots don't conform to that three acres or the eighty percent. So there might be justification in that particular case to create a variance for that lot. But that's the only two things I see. I know that isn't what Mike wants to hear, but that's just my opinion on it.
Yeah, if, if he were to be denied by the building inspector, then he would seek relief through a variance.
Yeah.
I, in, in writing letters, documentation gets lost too much in this place, Charlie. You know that yourself.
Well, we have to, we have a new building inspector who seems to be on the ball.
How long is he gonna be here?
It's certainly your, your call, but somehow it has to be shown that either it's not a buildable lot and that you're clear on six twelve and six fifteen, or you have to endorse it. I don't see what your choice is other than that. I don't see what your choice is other than that.
I can take this to the building commissioner tomorrow. I'm sure he'll be there.
That's not going to change my mind. Like I said, the best thing you can do is take this back and put an endorsement on it. We can't make you put something on a Form A. You know, I'll be happy as a clam if that was done. That that lot was labeled unbuildable. Whatever you do after that, like I said, that's between you and the Board of Appeals. But I've been on the board a long time, fought for a long time, lot-shaped factor, because it is creative engineering. You know, that's what you get paid to do, I'm sure. You guys do a good job, but you know, it's got to stop someplace.
Ken, when was this filed?
The decision has to be made tonight.
Oh, okay.
And then they got a gun to your head and you're on a cliff, right?
Was it filed with the town clerk? When was it submitted?
Yes, it was.
When was that?
May ninth.
So you don't have twenty-one days between now and the next meeting?
No.
Well, we have to make a decision, so I think position a number of members is that they wouldn't want to approve this as submitted. You could withdraw it because we don't have any time and we can't do an extension on a Form A. So we can take a vote and, or you can withdraw it. And Ken can talk to the building inspector. I don't know if that will satisfy everybody, but it's really up to you because we're going to keep staring at this plan. We're not getting anywhere, so.
It's insanity, right?
You have to make a decision. What you want us to do.
Well, yeah, we're going to review our options, so we're going to withdraw.
Okay.
Do that in writing. Stop. Do that in writing. Thank you. Next, we have an approval not required claim with PK Green Gate Real Estate Trust. Seventy-five and seventy-seven Green Gate Lane. It's a lot of my lot. Is the applicant here, Mr. Chairman? Is the applicant here? Is anyone here representing that? Let me see, I'm gonna couple off the top. That one.
Ken, we need to create parcel B one, which is to be conveyed to the owner of the lot, three A, so let's find B one. B one. Parcel B one. To be conveyed to the owner of lot one oh three A. And to create parcel A one.
Which is to be conveyed to the owner of the lot.
Well, I guess right off the bat, this is only an A and R if you determine that Franklin Lane or the dirt road as it's listed is a sufficient width and grade to call it a roadway.
What? This is, what?
Is Franklin Lane or the dirt road as it's referred to, is that sufficient enough for frontage?
Does it provide proper access?
This plan says they're swapping thirteen hundred and eighty square, thirteen hundred and eighty-four square feet. It doesn't mention the frontage or the roadway.
Well, I'm looking at the heavy black line that's showing a showing a roadway layout and they're not intending to create that.
Doesn't say that.
The difference is at the house, there's a change in the lot line that you see, it creates an angle.
Yeah.
And then there's a long, thin triangle of land that extends out, which is the opposite.
Right.
And so that's to balance the property between the two.
I don't understand, Mr. Chairman, why are you talking about Franklin Lane?
Well, I saw the heavy lines here creating these.
No, I don't think, that's not the request of this plan.
They've already been created.
I don't know, that's not what this plan's about. This plan is about an exchange of thirteen hundred and eighty-four square feet.
This, this triangle here and that triangle there.
So I don't know anything about Franklin Lane or Green Gate, but this is a land swap.
Is that, is that roadway layout, does that exist now? You remember that? You remember that, Charlie?
No.
Yes, tripping, yeah.
Green Gate Lane was a subdivision plan years ago, but I don't remember Franklin Lane at all, so I have to assume that it's a laid-out street thirty feet wide. But clearly it was divided before. You've got old lot lines there. It's separated.
If I misreading it, then.
Franklin Lane was approved by the planning board on April ninth, nineteen ninety. You don't remember that, Mike?
I do. So what they're doing is swapping a long sliver, which goes down to the water, which is parcel A one of thirteen hundred and eighty-four feet, for parcel B one, which is a triangle up near the house of similar area. So that the stairs to the beach end up on one thousand three B. And the lot line
The septic system fits in the other.
Goes around whatever structures, maybe it's a carport or wherever it is for the existing building, is on one thousand three A. So assuming Franklin Lane is already in existence and that's the only thing they're doing and it's a simple Form A.
I just don't remember Franklin Lane being there. Maybe I just didn't have a name.
I don't either, George, but that doesn't mean it doesn't exist. I don't know if it would make any difference if it existed or not. If you go back to the provisions of eighty-one L where it says adding or taking away small pieces, so as not to affect the frontage, it's not considered a subdivision. So that's really all you need to know and you can endorse it on that basis.
I move to re-endorse this plan as presented.
Sir.
Another discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That's a new lot line, but if it's not, it's not. Signature thing?
Sometimes.
I end up with the registry.
You'd do better that way.
He needs a vote of the board.
All in favor? I did vote. Oh, what, the signature thing?
The signatures, yeah.
Give you that before I split it. We have a request for the bond release for All American Assisted Living.
One question on that release, Mr. Chairman, what are we doing with the road? Whatever happened with the end of that? It was supposed to go out through the bog out to that next road. Was that ever going to get built or it was never going to be built?
It's required as part of the subdivision plan.
Again, it ties back to Mr. Serke had mentioned that he would come before the board to sort of make a decision and finalize that.
All the plans that were submitted down there that I saw showed a connection. And all of a sudden it went away. And, oh, it's okay, it's okay. No. It's not okay.
The latest communication I had from Mr. Serke was but to let us know what they would like done and respected that.
I just want them to build what they submitted.
And I don't think we respond to that.
Well, I sat here, I told them in person. What's on the plan is all I want you to build.
Do we have anything in writing saying, a report that everything is completed?
Everything is not completed.
Date is May ninth.
People living in there, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They have until the thirty-first of May to have everything completed. I made an inspection on the ninth of May and there were several outstanding items that are in that letter. You don't have it, George?
Think I saw it, but I might have read it online and that's what I'm thinking of.
Concrete bounds, there's six of them to be set. They were in the process of doing it the day that I was there. The slopes and shoulders within the roadway layout itself at that time have not generated good grass cover. Then I went through the Delbrook J.S.K. site work punch list that was created and approved, where you approved the performance bond of some ninety thousand dollars. Two of three eastern red cedars on the north side of the site are clearly dead, need to be replaced. Third tree in that same location may possibly be dead. At least half the lower branches are definitely gone. There's one other eastern red cedar on the southeast side of the site that was in very poor condition. Crosswalk painting at the main entrance was all but worn off. I suspect they painted it last fall late after they paved the road. And it just didn't uphold over the winter, so it needs to be redone. There are some sinkholes in the drainage, the big drainage area next to the overflow. And I suspect that maybe the, maybe some of the fabric or something is separated out and is allowing the dirt to get down inside. So that needs to be investigated and if there needs to be any correction made, they need to do that. There's some minor erosion on the base of slope into that area. There's several areas where there's rills of erosion on the north slope because the grass hasn't taken hold yet. Small section of Cape Cod berm that needs to be fixed. And the paved waterway, which is shown on the plans clearly and it was intended to be built, pointed out several times during the course of construction, has not been changed. What happened there was they put the sign right close to where the paved waterway is supposed to be, so you don't have any room between it and the sidewalk to get the swale in. So you're seeing the results of the wash coming across the sidewalk in that area. So with that as my report, I had recommended that the bond not be released. But the bond expires the thirty-first of May. So I think that you need to get ahold of the applicant or the applicant's attorney. Get them to get the bond updated before the expiration on the thirty-first, otherwise you lose it.
And also, the bond provided was for the way the pavement was listed on the plan, which basically stopped at their property line.
That's, that's correct. Originally, the bond was just for the road. But the bond was then amended to include all of their area's landscaping items within the special permit. Now, there may be some things about the special permit that you could let go beyond that, especially the landscaping, because they were supposed to have a contract to maintain the landscaping on a regular basis. That, I believe, is part of the special permit. But there are other things on the site, such as the minor erosion and what's taking place in the infiltration area and that swale that never really got built that I think need to be addressed. I'm sure they'll do it, but you got to make sure it gets done before the thirty-first, otherwise you've got a problem with
So at this particular point in time, we won't be meeting before the thirty-first, then they would have to keep the bond intact. That was a insurance bond?
Yeah, it was a approved bond that was through the International Fidelity Insurance Company, so it's an insurance bond. Shall continue for a minimum of, let's see. The above bounded principle shall well and truly perform all the work of our specified on or before May thirty-first of twenty seventeen, except for maintaining the health and growth of all grass sod plots, landscape features, which shall continue for a minimum of two years from the date of the issuance of the occupancy permit. And until receipt by the surety of an attested copy from the planning board vote that taken at an open meeting, following or prior written notice to the above bounded principle, received no later than seven days. This bond shall remain in force, in effect, and if the work is not completed, shall be due and payable by the above bound principal and surety jointly and severally in accordance with the terms of the vote. And they signed it back on February seventeen.
So the insurance company needs to be notified immediately of these defects.
I'd send them a registered letter.
Well, I mean, they may well get the work done before the thirty-first, but we have to notify them now that it isn't done.
You need to take action tonight on something to at least notify them and work something out.
Motion to
I did send a copy of the letter, I think, to Phil Cudero from Allen and Major, the engineers, and also to Attorney Serke. So they have the letter, but I haven't heard anything from Attorney Serke yet.
Is there contact information for the bonding company?
Yeah, it's one Newark Center, twenty-fourth Jersey. Copy the document there. So I'm sure you must have them in your file, Ken.
Correct.
Yeah.
I move we notify the bonding company that they failed to perform the required work.
Should we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed? Very good. Can you get something out tomorrow?
Right, we'll send a certified letter out to the bonding company.
Right.
Should we email them too, so they know it's coming? All right, the next is a continued public hearing. Well, it's not the public hearing, actually, it's, the hearing's been closed and we on twenty-seven oh seven Kernbrae Highway and asked that the written conditions be presented so we could read through them. I think you all have them in front of you.
Mr. Chairman, there's a number of items missing on the list. Some of the items that have been touched on and some that have been missed.
Why don't we go through them one at a time here?
Okay.
Condition one, are those dates all?
Those are the dates of the plan.
Well, this says revised through February sixth and their hearing, what was the last with the architectural and the and the driveway changes? Was that February sixth on the plan or was there one after that?
There was one building plan after that and that's why the building concept plans were filed separately as identified on the
Yeah.
And you have a, present, there's a condition that building plans be resubmitted prior to building permit? So they'll be amended again.
No changes in layout, condition two. No changes in layout materials made by the planning board. Could be done as an informal presentation with a Could be done as an informal presentation with a request to be considered as a minor change. Pre-construction or pre-application, condition three, should be held prior to commencement of work. Condition four is a list of the inspections on site. Number five, occupancy permit should... No request for occupancy permit should be submitted till the final inspection has been made. If the occupancy permit is sought, then satisfactory security, uh, surety... Posted. Then I think we fall to our regular conditions. Substantial use in construction permitted by this is not commenced within two years from the date which the decision is filed, minus any time for appeal. Then the permit will be, oh, it's different wording than we used to... And then a description of the appeal process. Groundwater elevations tested prior to the final design of the stormwater system. Dumpster pad should be enlarged to two dumpsters.
In reference to the stormwater system, isn't that going to be retested so that it meets some criteria, or shouldn't that be referenced? I mean, to me, this just reads that if they just do another test, it's all fine, whether it meets standards or not. I thought that the whole purpose of that was to retest the groundwater, to make sure that it meets...
Well, it's so they can witness firsthand that they'll have the separation between the groundwater, correct?
But shouldn't that be referenced? That's my question. Shouldn't it be referenced why they're doing a retest? That would help in terms of clarification of the condition.
Well, I believe the purpose is to make sure there's proper groundwater separation between the system and the water table.
So that could be so stated. I think so.
Are there any other soil conditions you generally observe in that?
No, that was it mainly.
As I said, number ten, dumpster pad being enlarged to accommodate two dumpsters. Number eleven, northwest side of the building shall include additional architectural treatment and design elements. These treatments will be submitted to the planning board prior to issuance of building permit.
Do they have to meet any type of standard? Or are they just gonna submit us some kind of a little change, and it's automatically approved?
Uh, there are some recommendations in the bylaw, such as banning or breaking up the... Can't quote the whole...
Well, I know, but during the meeting, didn't they talk about adding windows or something?
Yes, they did talk about adding windows.
Shouldn't that... I think, to clarify then, the second sentence in that, "The building plans with these treatments shall be submitted to the planning board for approval prior to issuance of a building permit." I think that would be good.
Well, what's the northwest side?
Facing the building to the right.
Right side, facing the building from Cranberry Highway.
Facing the building from the street to the right.
What about the left side?
They said it's fully wooded, and you won't be able to see it.
Well, but that could be developed, same as the right side.
Well, that's somebody else's problem. Just being a wise guy.
I don't, I mean, you look at the plan, and you obviously assume you got vacant lots on both sides they're probably gonna get built on. When they get built on, you know the one on the left because of the wetlands, it's gonna be, it's gonna be built next to the building, right next to the building, 'cause there's very little space.
Right.
So it seems to me they're gonna have to do something on both sides.
Do you wanna scratch northwest and put on sides of buildings shall be?
Yeah. And I, you know, other than windows, I don't know what they could do that would be, that would get my vote.
They talked about banning, putting up...
You know, a little band just makes it look like a construction building with a little band. I mean, that, to me, doesn't, doesn't do it.
Well, they talked about continuing the awning down the side also.
That would not be good looking.
What's the point of an awning? So that the vegetation doesn't grow? I mean, I...
Didn't the plan show that they put the brick down the sides as well?
And landscaping as well.
None of that helps.
But the brick was gonna be, what, four feet high or something like that on both sides as well, correct?
That's right.
That's, I mean, not that that's the end-all, be-all, but still a metal building. Okay, pass it. Yep.
It's just one side.
It doesn't say what the...
That's the proposed building. Maybe we should do a break, at least it gives it some interest. We'll also break it in front.
We can take these to the architect.
I mean, I don't... We're not supposed to do that, I'm sure, but...
We were just answering your question.
You should have answered the question when they were sitting here. You can't design their building now.
Well, they're gonna have to come back with a design for the building in the next.
No, that wasn't, that wasn't how we left the meeting last week. What we left the meeting, or two weeks ago, was we were gonna have these conditions so we could read them and see if it was something they could approve. Because we already had one vote against it, and then this, and then Bob came in, and he wanted to see the conditions. So if he doesn't like the conditions and he votes against it, it's kind of a moot point. Because what did the attorney say? You needed four votes or three votes?
Four.
So you need four votes. So, you know, let's not waste a lot of time here tonight. If you're not in favor, let's just take the vote and let them go to appeals. Because it's an application by right. Now, you're trying to add windows into a space building and brick on the side and more stuff. So these were the conditions that we wrote up. Mike, you said there's some missing?
Yes.
Which ones are missing? Remind me.
Well, the applicant had stated, not because we asked, that there'd be no vehicles stored outside of the back of the building. That's not listed here. Material storage is strictly inside the building, but there is a twenty-four hour grace period for delivery. That's not listed.
I don't agree with... Let me just, let me just finish what we have in front of us here, and... Item twelve, lighting will be limited to onsite directed shielded fixtures.
Yep.
Thirteen, no fabrication, repair, or retail sales shall take place outside the building.
I think there was no fabrication or repair was at all on the property, not outside the building.
On the site, it should say. I mean, I...
You know, if you wanna say outside the building, I could go with that, but I, you know...
But that's not what we said. That's last week, and that's also, our last meeting, and that's also what the applicant said.
Yeah, but I, I think you're venturing into areas that are already covered by other bylaws that, you know, would unduly impact this.
Right.
That's my opinion.
Right.
That's...
I think it, I don't know, I think it should say that these things aren't allowed on site, period.
Well, then...
Inside, outside.
What's left to do there, though?
Right.
What do you mean, what's left to do? They're doing, contractors presumably, people have a little office, and they store stuff in the back. That's what they told us was the design.
They pick up their vans and they go to work.
Yeah. So if you wanna prefab something in the shop, you can't do it, because there's no fabrication in the shop.
Well, they say this is storage, and we don't, you know, they start bringing in people in there. They're making stuff in there. That's more people on site, and there's, you know, we're not running a fabrication shop there, 'cause you don't have the parking for that. It's supposed to be storage. I mean, that's the way they presented it, and it seems to me it should say that that's what they're doing. Four hundred feet of office space, and the rest is storage. That's, that was what was presented to us.
The... Well, I could, I would agree with this is, you know, this stuff isn't happening outside, but I don't think we have the authority to impact what's going on inside the building.
But that's not what was discussed, Mr. Chairman. So if that's the case, then we should just vote?
Well, I mean, obviously, the applicant was trying to give you everything you wanna hear, but...
We didn't ask for anything. Not one of us asked those questions.
Well, I'm just curious, so, you know, what would, what could take place on site? It's a contractor, he can't sew a window, he can't sew a door, or he can't sew carpet. He can't, if you wanted to go strictly, you can't cut the carpet there, you can't...
Don't look at me. I'm ready to vote. I just think that these should reflect what the applicant told us. If the applicant wishes to change that, that's up to the applicant.
All right, so fourteen, towed equipment, I don't remember that.
I think it references deliveries, right? But we did talk about, like, an HVAC contractor who might be taking old equipment and bringing it back to the facility to stockpile it to scrap it. None of that would be left outside, it had to be inside.
Well, towed equipment, I would, I would take that to mean if a contractor has a trailer with tools in it, or a landscaper is there, and he has a trailer with his gear in it.
Every landscaper has a trailer. You know, if you got four trailers...
And then once those trailers...
Four trailers at night.
Once those trucks and trailers are in the back, it no longer meets the turning radius for the fire apparatus. That's why the applicant said there wouldn't be anything stored outside.
Fifteen is, upon completion and as-built plans submitted to the building department with a copy of the planning board. Sixteen, any element of the use, site, and building design not expressly approved is hereby denied. And then seventeen is, decision is effective upon the filing of the plan, the deeds, and must certify that the appeal period has been met.
You know, if you, if you look at the minutes of May eighth, when Mr. Churchill was speaking, some of the confusion in the notice of decision becomes clear. If these minutes are accurate, Mr. Churchill states that the project is a seventy-four hundred square foot building, essentially a retail establishment for individual contractors. Park their vehicles, store materials, and meet with customers in a small storefront.
For what's the board's pleasure? Now, of the ones you said were missing, Mike, do you wanna...
I, I don't think that, I'm gonna say on the record, I don't think they're reasonable, but the applicant said them. Won't be any storage of vehicles outside of the building. That's, to me, that's impossible, but that's what he mentioned, so...
I also think that's unenforceable. I don't know who's gonna be keeping score on that.
We didn't ask him to offer that. He offered it, Mr. Chairman.
Well, you don't have any provision for no parking in the back either.
So...
I've got, yeah, I've got lots of conditions, just to make life difficult. Number one, if you look at the landscape plans, there is a provision for landscaping, that you're supposed to have a buffer along the front street line. If you look at these landscaping plans, there's a landscaping area directly in front of the parking spaces, which would block it from the house immediately across the street. But it doesn't extend down at all, so anybody driving by, and then people in the corner of that street are gonna be looking right into the parking lot. What the bylaw requires is that it be along the front street line. And it's supposed to visually screen the parking cars from the street. And it doesn't do either one of those. If you look at the plans, first of all, they have a couple of deciduous trees, which aren't gonna help you six months of the year. Their buffer is day lilies, not really very helpful too much of the year. And they have shrubs, so one and a half to two feet high. Even if you mound those on a two-foot thing, you're not gonna block visual impact of the parking area on the street. Actually, our shrub requirement minimum is three feet, but they, you know, a two-foot thing and a foot and a half of shrub isn't gonna block the look of the cars. And this is, they're all residences across the street. And I think we should have a condition that says that that buffer zone should be along the street line, which is what is required, and it should be sufficient to block the view of the parked cars, 'cause that's what's in there. You know, day lilies and stuff are nice and pretty, but they're not for what this is designed for. The bylaw are designed to provide screening, and this doesn't do that. So that's one of the conditions that I would, I would suggest. I think we have to specify there's gonna be absolutely no parking in the back or on the side, and that we should have no parking signs. I know it's difficult to get this enforced. But the way this was approved by the fire department is there would be nothing back there. And when they submitted their plans to the fire department, they showed nothing. No storage, no parked cars, nothing in there. And that's the way the site plan was presented. So I think that the approval should conform to the terms that they submitted, which is nothing back there. And I don't think that they should have... And I don't think that they should have, I don't think they should have even temporary storage back there because, you know, it could be the night where you have a fire. It could be the night somebody's dumped a whole bunch of stuff and we'll take care of it in the morning. You know, fires don't run nine to five. I, I just think that that should be very clear about parking in the back at any time. In addition, it seems to me that you don't want a situation where people take all of the box trucks and things that they used during the day and they just stick them in the front at night because that screening's not designed for, for large vehicles. So you really shouldn't have overnight parking.
The applicant said the vehicles would be parked inside the building at night.
So then there shouldn't be a problem with overnight parking outside on the property. I know there's been a concern about the front of the building and that it really is not conducive to that area. I don't know how you would deal with that issue. I don't know how you would describe that issue, but I know that's a concern for some people. I think we don't have any, any business hours in here and we should have business hours in because we're talking about houses immediately across the street and there are houses immediately back, the whole subdivision right in the back. Now, they're not going to want somebody really early in the morning, a beeping truck bagging up and they're not going to want to hear a bunch of people, I think, outside of business hours. I think we should specify in here that the, that the individual buildings, they said they're going to be four hundred square feet of office space. And it's designed that way and the rest is storage, so I think we should specify that. So it, you know, that's the, the limit of the amount because that's the way that the, the parking is set up and that's the way people anticipate. That's what they've told us they're going to do. And finally, we need a provision, I think, that requires them to maintain the landscaping at all times and that requires them to provide either a bond or a landscaping contract under section ten seventy-one of the bylaw. Then, there are other conditions we've used on site plan approvals. They'll comply with all requirements necessary for road opening permits. Planning Board and its staff will have access to the property to ensure conditions are complied with. Let me get my notes. We normally have something on construction, debris being removed, portable toilets being provided, no work on Sundays and holidays. We should have probably work times on there, no stumps of debris to be disposed of on the site. They'll comply with the bylaws of the Town of Wareham and the approvals and conditions of town boards and commissions in the Wareham Fire District. I don't know about a stormwater management plan. Do we have one?
I think I mentioned that in my letter.
Should provide the stormwater management plan for construction operation of the site as part of the approval. And that they'll apply to Wareham Municipal Maintenance for road opening permit.
Actually, I think they have to go to Mass Highway for that.
That's a state road.
Okay.
Okay, so all those, you got all those conditions?
Hi, here's what I have. That the landscape buffer in the front should be improved. That there's no parking on the side and rear, no overnight parking. The business hours are specified. I don't know what that is intended to be.
I'll give you more detail.
That there's a limit to four hundred square feet of office space per unit. That they're going to maintain the landscaping in accordance with section ten seventy-one.
Well, that condition, hang on though, if you go back to the first part of the conditions, no changes in the site layout of materials should be made without approval of the planning board. You don't have to find a planning board, pre-application conference with a notice given. I, I don't think to be constructed per plan dated August twenty-second revised through February sixth. If they're going to change that, they're going to come back anyway.
That's right.
So you're kind of beating it to death, which would put another condition on top of number one.
Well, number one should refer to the emergency vehicle movement plan. And the building concept plans, they're not going to comply with those because they're going to change those. Right?
Well, if they change what they, if they put in the four hundred feet or however many feet that you're saying that they had, if they're going to change it, that can change it.
They can't change. It affects the parking.
They could reduce it and reduce the amount of parking that's required as well. But if they did that, they should have to come back to the board for either determination of a minor or a major change. So maintain the landscaping, get the road opening permits from state highway. There should be access by town, town staff and board members to ensure compliance. That there's work limitations, no work on Sundays, holidays, no debris disposal, hours of work during the week. That there's a stormwater management plan.
And the business hours for each business, you know, Monday through Friday, Saturdays, however it's going to be approved.
What's the town noise bylaw, seven, seven? Don't know, I'll hand. But we can do it on the basis of the noise bylaw, hours of operation.
Can the stormwater operation and maintenance plan, if you want to make reference to it, it's in there, drainage calculations and supplemental information revised since December twenty-eighth, twenty sixteen. Thank you. I'd also recommend that consider as a condition of approval that the project must comply with the requirements of the Board of Health with respect to total wastewater flows according to Title V. Changes in use that would make the total flow from the site greater than that was shown on the plan should be considered for site plan modification. That's item five of my January ninth letter to the board.
All right, so you want some language?
For which one?
I'll start with number one. Applicant shall, I'll just read it to you and I can give, write it out later for you. Applicant shall submit revised landscape plan that extend the raised landscape buffer to lot one thousand B three with plantings which will visually screen parked cars. No building permit will issue until such plans have been approved by the board. No parking of vehicles to the side or rear of the building shall be permitted. The area is for emergency vehicle and delivery vehicle access only. No parking sign shall be prominently displayed. No overnight parking outside of the building shall be permitted. Applicants shall submit revised building design plans, which will include appropriately designed windows along the building sides or similar features that avoid long blank walls. No building permit shall issue until the plans have approved by the board. And I don't know if people want to add anything about the, the front facade, but. No business should be conducted on the premises on Sundays or holidays or other days except between seven AM and five PM. No more than four hundred square feet of each unit shall be office space. The remainder shall only be for storage. Owners shall properly maintain all landscaping. In addition, applicant shall prior to issuing to the building permit, ensure maintenance of the landscaping plans by providing a bond in an amount satisfactory to the board or provide an executed maintenance agreement with landscape company acceptable to the board as provided in section one oh seven one of the zoning bylaw. And the other standard ones are on that sheet. I'm just telling you my proposals for these things and I would take out in section one, I would put in emergency vehicle movement plan and take out the building concept plans because they're not filing those. I, I would take out in decision and reason, section G. The plan shows compliance with the zoning bylaws because I don't think we're in a position to make that determination. And section six, after occupancy permit requested prior to completion of all site work, the board may permit occupancy provided proper security is posted. Because I don't think that we need to.
What do you mean by that, Paul?
In other words, if they come in and they haven't finished the, the, all of the, the site work and they're looking for an occupancy permit, we can say, we don't have to say yes. We can say no, or we could say yes, but you have to provide security. But I don't know that we necessarily want to say somebody, you can go in and start operating and say they have none of the front landscaping done at all. We should have.
There have been cases in the past where the Building Department has granted temporary COs, like that it can't get their paving in before the plants close, that they can't get their landscaping done because of the season.
So you just got through that with All-Americans, so it would be the same sort of thing, that they provide security for the remaining work to be done if they can't get it and they need the OC.
But you, but you're right, the way this is written, it's like you, you have to take the security if they haven't done the site work. You can't say we're not going to do an occupancy until that work is done.
I don't know why you wouldn't want to cooperate with a person if they post the security, so it, it makes sure that it gets done. What benefit is it to anybody to simply deny them the occupancy permit, period?
So if you got this property and they wanted to start, they have none of the landscaping on the front. There's no protection at all. And now they're going to start and they're going to, all the vehicles are going to come in and they're going to be operating and the buffer that you're requiring isn't there, so.
So you require, require them to post money with the town like you've done in any other number of cases, so it gives them the incentive.
But you would have to do that.
Yeah. What did I say?
You would have to allow them to, to have an occupancy permit without doing the site work.
Well, it wasn't the intent of my, the language. Which one are you reading that, Paul?
Number six.
Doesn't match up for the memory.
In my last letter, which was February thirteenth, in recommended conditions, number four, it said no request for an occupancy permit should be submitted until a final site construction inspection's been made. And then, and that a report to the Planning Board and Director of Inspection Services that all work has been completed. If an occupancy permit is requested prior to the completion of work, proper security should be posted in the amount informed satisfactory to the planning board. That's what I put in for four and five of my latest letter. That's what my intent was. Does that not say what?
It is, but what I would say would be occupancy permits requested prior to completion of all site work, the planning board may permit occupancy provided security. So it's up.
I, I will argue with the language. I think I'm saying the same thing, but if you want to change the language, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just concerned that, that it would be no option to the board to say, we need the work done, not the security.
I don't see where that benefits anyone, to force somebody to not get the building permit.
Maybe everybody's happy with saying, go ahead and post a bond. I'm just saying there's no option there.
Well, the option in the past has been, you know, you're on private property and if the Building Department granted you a temporary pending the completion of paving or maybe you're waiting for Verizon to move a pole or, or landscape, growing season, he policed it or your zoning enforcement officer policed it and made sure when the condition was repaired that the site was completed.
Is there something new that's going to start taking place?
That's what's happened in some cases in the past. I know some cases it hasn't.
Not too many.
I don't think there's anything we can write down on a piece of paper here that'll make it happen any better.
Because we, we went through temporary occupancy permit to grant somebody some leeway and we were promised an architectural plan, work was going to be done and nothing's been done.
That's the point of putting up security for that.
I think you should have both options, the ability to say no or the ability to grant them security.
Make them accountable, basically.
Well, if you grant them security, you put a date on it, work not done by a certain date and you're out.
I mean, you're assuming that the board's going to say no, but the reality is if it makes sense, the board's always said yes. So if it's a, like you've talked about, if it's a climate issue in the pavement or the, you know, it's not the proper time to plant, that makes sense. If you have a client who's got their building done and they just want to start occupying it and they haven't finished the other work, I think that's a no. And we have that up a childhood furnace. And we still have that up a childhood furnace.
Unfortunately, the language in the special permit didn't get written so that you had any leverage on it.
Well, this would give us leverage. You just say no.
And what do you gain? You get a half-built building that can't move forward.
If it's reasonable, you say yes. If it's unreasonable, you say no.
So you got, you got the seventeen conditions plus the ten or eleven from Paul, right? So my motion, Mr. Chairman, is still to grant it with conditions. We get seventeen conditions that we reviewed this evening and ten or eleven that Paul just added. So my motion is to grant with conditions.
Is there a second? I will second it for discussion.
Sorry?
I said I will second it for discussion. I think we've.
Just a technical point, two dumpsters. I don't know where two came from and we have five minutes.
There was, there was a discussion at the last hearing that they would need at least two and they should make provisions for at least two. They can be big enough, they can be larger, but.
I've had enough conditions, but I had to, you know, so many of these are going to want their own little dumpster in there, I think. Everybody's dumping at somebody else's dumpster. You don't want to make this too big in the back. I'm just. You could have to accommodate a sufficient number of dumpsters.
And if a recycling company comes in and puts insufficient.
Yeah, I know. It's so hard to judge what's going, they're going to need when you, we don't know what's going in there.
Why don't you say one for each unit and just be done with it?
I, I've been here four years. I've never seen this many conditions on a project yet. He's not going to build this.
Well, but they're, they're not here, are they?
No, the hearing's closed.
Hearing was closed. This was just so you could read the conditions because you missed it because you came in late. So we got the, the conditions and then Mike mentioned the two that, that weren't on there. That makes nineteen. And then your eight or nine or ten, however many, how many did you write for him?
Some of those are the standard conditions that we.
So there's another ten.
I had to listen.
So that's, that's, you know. So that's, that's, you know. So if there's no discussion.
If there's no discussion, I will ask for a vote. All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
It's four one, thank you. I should have put this on the back of the meeting. Site plan review for Fort Fairfield. And I imagine we're doing definitive at the same time. They're both listed.
Seems like I've seen this before.
I think I've seen this before.
All right, I'm Bill Madden from GAF Engineering here in behalf of Fort Fairfield in the definitive subdivision and site plan review. Representatives of Fort Fairfield are also here tonight, Richard Mansfield and John Clark. They'll be able to offer up some answers, I'm sure some questions you might have. It's our first hearing on the, on the site plan review, and we had a, a brief meeting on the definitive plan, I think it was on April twenty-fifth or so, the night of town meeting in the cafeteria of Town Hall. Just a brief, brief meeting to open up that hearing. At that time, we discussed that we would be discussing both the definitive plan and the site plan review together at the, at the, at this public hearing on May twenty-second. I don't know if Rich, you'd want to add something first, or you just want me to get into the site plan?
No, that's fine, let's go right ahead.
Okay. I guess this goes back some time ago, probably, probably six months when we came in, we just introduced the project to the board in a very general, in a very general way. Initially, we thought about extending that to the ground so that we could create the frontage for, for the lot. And I think when we had some of our initial discussions, it was felt that we would prefer to see the site plan review together with the, with the definitive plan. And the zoning by law also provides for, for the opportunity to present both of the projects together at the same time, so that's what we're really, really doing. You might recall from going back, I think it was two thousand fourteen or two thousand fifteen, town meeting authorized a couple of easements for us to use on town land so that we could create the, the necessary fifty feet, and also when we had cul-de-sac proposed, the circle, the turnaround at the end of the cul, at the end of the cul-de-sac. So we show those two dotted areas on the definitive plan. This indicates only the layout that we're seeking to provide for the frontage to create the lot for the, for the development. So essentially, what we have is, is the need to create about a hundred and forty-seven feet of roadway layout to accommodate, to accommodate the, the site plan review. So what I've done is that first plan indicated the layout lines of the, of the subdivision, but the second plan actually shows a couple of the islands, some to show how the two integrate, how the definitive plan integrates with our site plan. And you can see that we, we tried to put the Thatcher Lane extension, we held it a little bit as far to the west as we possibly could. We show a fifty-foot layout in twenty, sorry, twenty-four feet of paved at Fort Thatcher Lane, which is part of the parking lot for the entrance into the site for the Fort Fairfield, Fort Fairfield project. So when I wrote up my list of waivers for the, for the definitive plan, I think, I think what I tried to do was include the travel lane as at least a paid portion of the, of the subdivision road, and the waiver list just continued on with drainage, street trees, lighting. It has a, I have a pretty detailed list of all the waivers that we, that we would be seeking relief from. That was presented back on the twenty-third of, of March. But with that said, I think we can flip over and move on to what we proposed for the site plan, just for the, I think that he's moving the discussion forward. The, the project is located at the end of Thatcher Lane, the end of the third, and put together an overview that gives us a sense of where we sit in the, in the neighborhood, so to speak. What we did is put it on an aerial photograph, I think this satisfies one of the sections of the bylaw that says we need to provide an overview plan at least of a scale of one inch equals a hundred to show the immediate area around our site. And what we did is we superimposed our site plan in a, in a kind of cursory manner on the, on this aerial photograph. So you can see we have Thatcher Lane in the existing cul-de-sac at the end of Thatcher Lane. There's a heavy black line, it might not be on your plan that shows the, in fact, your plan shows a green, shows green space there. It's not intended to be green, it was a mistake on our part that I had them, had them correct, but in any event, Thatcher Lane would extend down here, and then we show our parking lot. The building that we're proposing construct, which is, which is slightly over eight thousand square feet, shown as a white, as a white box to the, to the southernmost portion of, portion of the site. We butt up against one ninety-five, we have eighty make peace, I guess, to the east, one ninety-five to the, to the south. You can see Cranberry, Cranberry Highway over to the west. This is used tire warehouse on the end of, on the end of Thatcher Lane, the Navionics facility, the wooden boat center, design mark, and B B, triple B machine shop over here. So that's, that's the, that's the, those are our neighbors. We also have a cranberry bog that's to, to the east, that's owned by eighty make peace company, and they have a representative here at the meeting tonight, I'm sure they have some questions because there's a couple of, couple of issues that are, not really issues, they're things that we're working through in the process. There's an easement, that's, that's to the benefit of the cranberry grower, that is on a small third of an acre portion of land over here, and we're in agree, in, in discussion purposes with them now to relinquish their easement. We're going to in turn return some additional land to them to use for cranberry operations. The reason being, and I'll just talk on it while I'm talking, since I, since I brought it up, the reason why we thought that it might make some sense is that cranberry operations is not going to be subjected to the same rules that we're subjected to with, with respect to conservation commission. We have to respect a fifty-foot no activity zone from the bordering vegetated wetland, which is the cultivated cranberry bog. So we're not able to construct anything within that fifty-foot area, but the cranberry companies are able to operate and use those areas for cranberry cultivation. They also have an easement through here, and I think the easement language is a little, little sticky, and those are the types of things that we're working through, is cleaning up the easement language. For example, there's, they talked about the access road in a drainage way being provided, and it's actually like in the cranberry bog, and, and a portion of which is on Navionics land, so those are the types of things that we're in the process of working out. This dotted line that you see on sheet number four, this is the area that's designated as the point three four acres for, for cranberry operations. There's a, there's a, there's a deed that specifies exactly how that piece of property can, can be used. We're working to change all those around to the benefit of the companies, to both companies, actually. It's going to be beneficial to both sides, it's, the discussions have started off fairly, fairly good so far. So we're moving on, moving on in that vein. But on sheet number four, we show basically the existing topography, we show the site features. It's really a vacant piece of land right now, there's basically scrub brush on there, stripped of most of the top soil from it. I don't know when that all occurred, but when we originally worked on the site back in two thousand and five, it was pretty much the way it is today, with the vegetation just maturing another ten, twelve years, and nothing in the form of specimen trees or anything of that nature, just basically scrub growth across that area. Couple of access roads that Cranberry Operations uses. There's access to the sign for Navionics, there's also a sign down here that's, that's for the mall at Wareham Plaza, well, yeah, because it's.
WS.
WS.
WS Development sign down here as well. Cell Tower site, further to the west, and a municipal pump station, sanitary pump station that's off our locust, but it's, it's one of the, one of the structures that's, that's in the general area. These little circles that we show, show the test pits that we dug across the site. Some were, some were dug in two thousand and seventeen, some were dug back in two thousand and five. Just use that data to check consistency in, with water table elevations, things of that nature, and we just felt that it was, was a good thing to put the old data plus the new data on, on the sheet. This, this site up here is where Navionics currently operates. They have a driveway and a parking area in the rear of the site, and their access comes right off the end of, right off the end of the cul-de-sac at Thatcher Lane. So when Thatcher Lane is reconstructed and extended at the end, we'll be constructing a new driveway within the layout onto the, connecting into the driveway that currently accesses the Navionics site. The fifth sheet is our general layout and utilities plan. It indicates how we're showing the vehicular traffic entering into the site. We've come into the site off of, off of Thatcher Lane, and we have essentially two driveways that are entering into the parking lot that provides capacity for sixty-six, sixty-six vehicles. If we were to look at our subdivision plan, you can see that we have the Thatcher Lane extension coming down through here. This dotted line represents the island. Here's our driveway that goes into Navionics facility, and this up, these other dotted lines indicate the little rain gardens that we have shown. This one is actually within the roadway layout. So there are the features that are in the roadway layout of Thatcher Lane are, are features that you would normally see in a roadway. I mean, there's nothing that's really special there, I mean, it's a drainage type of an issue, there's curving there, and there's throats or accesses into, into parking lots, things that you would find off of, off of a drive, off of a roadway to come into, into a site. So when we flip back and look at, at just the Thatcher Lane, at just the Fort Fairfield site, you can see that we would just be coming in here, we would, and the impervious surface just basically at the front line of our building, there'd be a recycled asphalt extension that would go down to the, to the south and provide access to the pump station for the town. So we're going to, pumps, access to the pump station for the town, as well as access to the cell tower site. It also provides access to the dumpster that would locate it, be located in the, in the rear of the building. So essentially what we do is we come in off of Thatcher Lane, we can circulate into a parking, into a parking lot that provides parking directly in the front of the eight thousand square foot building. There's a small parking area of twelve cars off to the east of the building, parking with handicap accessibility across the front, up front of the site. Excuse me. The, the islands are, the, the parking areas are broken up with some islands, we have a, a small rain garden, just a landscape island, another landscape island, we show a fire hydrant, kind of centrally located in the, in the, in the middle of the site. We have gone through it with the fire department, fire department seemed pretty reasonable with what we have, what we have shown for their access, which I'll talk about in a minute, as well as what we're looking at for distribution of, of water. Our, our utilities would extend essentially down the driveway entrance, and then we would go down the secondary entrance so that we could provide a utility corridor that would, that would pass in front of our building. We would pick up our utilities going into our building from the utility corridor, then we would stub them off for future connection to the building that would be proposed in the, in the, in the future. Right now, what we're looking to do, and we're calling it phase two, the building construction would be phase two, but we're looking to just click for, for the interim, is have a, a building pad there that would accommodate a six thousand square foot office-type building. The parking that we have shown on the site, total of sixty-six, sixty-six spaces, is suitable to provide the needs for the fourteen thousand square feet of, of total office, office use in there. I think we're, I think that our parking schedule requires just one per two hundred and fifty square feet over the fourteen thousand. We're required to have fifty-six spaces, but we have provided sixty-six. Sixty-six, it laid out, we think it laid out fairly well there, so we went with the larger, the larger number of spaces. I know the bylaw does encourage us to not provide any additional spaces, but we think, but we think that's a modest amount, and given the use of the site, this building is going to be used by government offices, so, you know, they, they will have visitors, they will have people from out of town, they will have, they will have functions.
Shelly.
Functions that go on down there from time to time, and they're not, you know, a big type of function, but they may give a class for soil scientists, for example. They may have a, a class for wetlands botanists. I mean, the Plymouth County Conservation District, I think you were on that district with me for a while. We had quite a number of different speakers come in there over, over the years, but that's what the intended use of the building is going to be, so we thought the sixty-six spaces made a reasonable degree of sense to, to provide there. So that's in general what we have for the, for the building, for the building site and the layout of, of the site. There's two drainage spaces that I'll show on the next, on the next sheet. The sheet is the, the site grading and the drainage plan. The utilities are shut off, so it just basically shows us what, what we're trying to do as far as shedding the water across the site. So what we try to do is we're trying to send it to. So, what we try to do is we're trying to send it in two different directions, was kind of split the site in half. Half it will go to this drainage basin, the other half would run to the drainage basin to the north. This, the north of the most drainage basin would be collecting stormwater that ends up going through a proprietary water quality structure. So, we have a water quality structure that'll remove most of the coarse sediment and floatables prior to being discharged into the basin. That affords us the ability to eliminate and not need to provide a sediment for bay that catch basin or proprietary structure performs the function of a for bay. So, we just discharge into that, store our water in the basin, and discharge out. And then through a level spreader where it converts the flow from pipe flow into sheet flow that would run back into the cranberry bog where it currently goes today. In a similar fashion, that's what would happen on the lower basin. The lower basin, we had a little bit more room, so we were able to put a small sediment for bay on that basin. And once our water flows through the for bay, it would go into this, into the drainage basin. And then in a similar manner, it would flow out through an outlet structure and a pipe and have a level spreader at the end of it where that water would discharge into the outside edge of a bog. And that stormwater actually goes underneath one ninety-five into the Rosebrook Cranberry Bog system of ADM. And that's primary reason why there, we have discussed with Makepeace, are what we're trying to do with our drainage. We're treating it in a manner that it will be, that they will be receiving treated water, not untreated water. So, that was, I think, pretty beneficial in that regard. Each one of the buildings has an underground infiltration system for the roof drainage systems. Since roof drainage is not contaminated with any runoff, I mean, from contact with a street or another pipe or another drainage system, it's suitable to go directly into the ground with any treatment. So, what we have done is we've shown two underground infiltration areas. Basically, each one will take half of the roof area and will go directly into the ground. In a similar manner, we have the same thing proposed for the, although it's not shown in this plan, but we have a infiltration area proposed underneath this sloped area here that would accommodate the six thousand square foot building. So, what we did do is we've accommodated with the design. All of our drainage includes all the parking that's needed for both buildings, all the stormwater for both buildings. The waters, the domestic water and the fire protection system that's designed to come in from Thatcher Lane has been designed to accommodate both buildings. So, what we're really doing is we're just ending our utilities, our utility corridor right about here. And we'll be able to just readily extend into the new building when that building gets constructed. We would expect that we would be back before the planning board for site plan review for that building when it comes about. There's a number of elements that require your approval and review. And we thought that we could accommodate both buildings with all of our utilities and all of our parking now. We just thought it made sense to do that.
So, Bill, you've captured everything, your whole piece of land there, parking, building runoff, what have you. You've captured it all, somewhat filtered it before it hits the bog on either side of the highway?
Correct.
All right, thanks again.
This sheet indicates the fire department access plan. This is number eight. I'm just moving through the sheets. There's something you want me to talk about when we're on with the utility or the grading sheet? Just stop me and I'll stop there. But right now, I just thought maybe we could just give you a quick overview as to everything that's proposed and we could develop some questions from that. But this is the fire department access sheet that we've gone over with the chief. Shows what, Wareham ladder number one for our template. We're coming down, we're showing how we can come down off of Thatcher Lane, get into our site, come down into the small park, the twelve-lot parking area on the south side of the, I'm sorry, the east side of the building, provides them adequate access. Comes across the front, gives them access to the front. They can come straight down to a turn into the area that we've left for them behind the building so they can get the rear of the building, they can back out, come back out the site. Similar fashion, they can come down on each side of the building pad site and come straight across the front in access out on Thatcher Lane. So, we provided them with the emergency vehicle circulation that they need. And they could actually access each one of the buildings with a parking lot full of cars. There'll be, you know, our vehicles, the fire department access vehicles would be in the twenty-four-foot travel lane that's required for the parking areas. So, like you guys were talking about previously about vehicles being stored in there, our plan takes into consideration, you know, basically full parking lot, a lot of people, unfortunate situation where they might have a false alarm that they have to come down there. They'd still be able to circulate through the site and come in and get out without great inconvenience. And I think there's, pretty sure there's a letter in the file that indicates they were satisfied with the manner in which we handled the emergency vehicles on the site. Won't be any needs for, any need for trailers or big trucks entering in the site. The largest truck that we would expect to have come to the site would be, you know, Staples Truck, WB Mason, somebody along those lines that would be dropping off office supplies to the buildings. Do show dumpster pad at the back of our building, we have a small dumpster pad and walkway that would go out to it. It's shown on a concrete, the dumpster would be on a concrete pad with an enclosure that's detailed on the drawings. And we have a landscape plan. We show where our facility sign would be or whatever. This is what they told us that the sign would look like. We propose it to go over in this area here, I'm not planting island. This is the landscape plan that we've shown. These are rain gardens. We have one, two, three, four small rain gardens that are just essentially first stage water quality treatment type of devices. As a result, they will infiltrate a small amount of runoff into each one of the areas. But it's not a primary, it's not a primary water quality device.
Excuse me, Bill, is that surface water only? That's surface water only?
Surface water only.
Not being brought in by pipe from some other location, just surface?
Right, coming in off a little bit of a paved waterway break in the curb that would be there. We also show a small six-inch diameter pipe that would come, that would be in each one of those areas with a small dome riser on it. So, in the event that surface water builds up, it'll be able to be conveyed away from each one of those areas and find its way down into that water quality proprietary catch basin that we have there prior to being discharged into the bio-retention area, or the detention pond, rather. The detention pond will just be, it'll be planted on its slopes. On the base of each one will be seeded with that New England wetland seed mix. So, but we expect most of the water to infiltrate through those basins. So, that's the planting list. We had a, this plan was prepared by a landscape architect as required. So, I think that it should meet the standards. We're focused mostly on screening and some perimeter, playing things around the front of the buildings were really the keys, as well as getting each one of those bio-retention areas or rain gardens landscaped to a reasonable level.
Is there any additional screening from one ninety-five? Or are you using the natural screening that's there now?
There's no screening from one ninety-five other than what is there naturally. I think that it's really desired, particularly for this building, is to have the view of, have the building to be viewed from the highway. You know, in the future, we don't know who might be the tenant in that building, but, you know, they may, they may want that type of visibility from the highway.
With that said, so is that still gonna be an office building?
Yes.
Yes. And what type of construction?
It could actually be two stories, could by zoning. We're not quite sure what would be the best fit. Hopefully, a tenant dictates it.
Exterior finishes?
Similar in design to what we're doing now. I think you'll see an elevation with some descriptions in your package.
Okay.
And the idea is that it has a campus feel to it so that the buildings are of similar quality. Be a mistake on our part to do anything less.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
We have the architect that I think we're required to provide you with building elevations.
Yeah.
So, this is the north elevation. It's the front, actually, it's gonna be the front of the building to view from the parking lot. I think it calls off the different material types. Colors, I didn't even talk about, over here, the look after, the machine bolts on the roof, the sidewalks and all. So, there was some discussion we had in the solar element on these roof panels. I'm not, you know, I don't think we've progressed to the degree yet to decide whether or not that would be implemented or not, but there has been some discussion with Fort Fairfield on providing those on the buildings.
I think that would be a concern if you're gonna leave the building exposed to one ninety-five. I don't think that's a good impression, the panels being visible. So, that would just be my opinion.
Hystetically or?
Yes.
It's part of the GSA and the United States Government's mission to put these buildings and their protocols under an energy star. Buildings of greater than ten thousand square feet are mandated. Buildings under ten thousand square feet are strongly covered by them. So, we as offerers who do this kind of work find that they're oftentimes very interested in all of our upgrades or construction plans. We're modifying buildings as an upgrade, and they're always looking for each one of those elements everywhere.
I understand. It's admirable. I just don't think it should be visible.
Understood. Solar canopies while we're talking about it? Thoughts on that?
I have to see them, I don't know.
No, I don't know, are there many in town? I don't know.
Canopies or?
Solar canopies.
Parking canopies.
I think the only one that people might be familiar with is at the Cape Cod, Cape Cod on.
Yeah, we've seen that.
Firstville Community College, I think, has some as well, over in Fall River.
Number of colleges, Cape Cod Community College, you know, here in southeastern Massachusetts, as Bill said, Bridgewater, Stone Hill. It's very prominent and, you know, I think we're all headed that way, one way or another. Some kicking and screaming, others, you know, more willing. People will put them on their house, but, you know, there are options for that now too. You can subscribe to Solar Gardens and, you know, get the same benefits, tax credits, et cetera, and, you know, feel a little greener about what you're doing without being committed to it on your route. For us, we're trying to make sure that it makes business sense, but at the same time, we are government providers, so it's something we're obligated to attempt to do in all these.
So, there's, I'll see the sheets, the construction details that show how we're gonna put everything together and won't worry you to go through each one of those. But maybe now it's time for some questions if you folks have some that you'd like to present to us.
Behind Phase Two building, Bill? I'm sorry, I haven't looked at the plans close enough, but it's just open space. Is it gonna be green space? What are you doing with that? Behind Building Two, between you and AD Makepeace's bog? Yeah.
This, right up to the fifty-foot no-disturbed buffer zone, we would be, that would be green, that would be loamed and seeded on the slopes. Right. And our driveways that would go back for fire access or what have you, those would be likely recycled asphalt.
Oh, not paved?
Would, we'd go one step below and be recycled, yep, the rat product. But that would be on each side.
So, paving would stop at the front of the building and?
Paving is gonna stop, you know, we have a line, we have a paving line.
At your island, right in front of the second building, it stops. What changes to gravel?
Well, it's gravel, it's only, sheet five probably shows it best. I mean, we cut off our paving right here for this first phase of the work.
Yeah.
And now we gravel around there. But upon the complete project, this would all be paved in the front. You can see the screened text behind the phase lines as to what we would be doing there for the build-out. It really mirrors what we're doing on the first phase. So, we have our handicap accessible parking in parking in the front of the building. There'd be concrete sidewalk, planting strip in front of the building, the building around it. So, we have, you know, landscaping sidewalk, access on each side. So, what you see over here will be replicated over there. But we're not really, you know, due to that wetland, that wetland bylock, we can't do too many things over there at all. So, we thought that it might be a good opportunity to work with Makepeace and, you know, provide a couple of things for them that they need, like access. They need to access the shore, the shore ditches for maintenance. They need to be able to get out there to check sprinkler heads. George Rogers, who's with Makepeace or representing Makepeace, he could tell you more about what they, more than I could ever tell you what they need to do out there. But we thought that they would have a little bit more flexibility with being able to do something in that land than us. And they like to keep their land pretty nice.
And when will you get a determination on that?
We're working, that's what we're working on now. You know, we haven't had Charlie's review yet, so all this is in progress as we speak. You know, the legal departments on both sides are discussing these things and working to acceptable solutions on both sides. So, you know, it's just a work in progress really right now.
So, no fifty-three G fund yet until that's determined, I assume?
Just got the-
Just got notice today that the check had been received, so I might wait till you finish negotiations. We sent the check a while ago, right?
Right, but you didn't have the proper forms so to start the account. So, that was what we just received tonight.
Oh, good.
So, we'll be able to set up the account. And I authorized Charlie to proceed now with the basis of having this documentation in place.
But we, Fort Fairfield and Make- But we, Fort Fairfield and Makepeace have been in contact together and our offices provided the Makepeace legal team, the documentation that they need to, or that they want so far. So we're just progressing, um, progressing right along in that regard. So there doesn't seem to be anything that's, um, nothing's been presented so far that would be, be a problem for either side. So we're both optimistic.
That question then regarding the 53G account and us possibly swapping the bond, is that something you, did I get that right?
The, the, those are two unrelated.
Okay. What?
I just thought, you were at, you were at hold maybe until you got a affirmative from AD Makepeace. You might say, hey, I think I won't do this just yet. So that was my question. I, you know, if your negotiations with Makepeace are going great, you might be more anxious to get the 53G going. And if they were a little, uh, stagnant, you might not.
We're in harmony.
So in, in consideration of this site plan, um, we asked for a bunch of waivers relative to the, to the subdivision, to the subdivision plan. And I don't know if you want me to go into them now or you prefer to, prefer to wait, but, you know, I can touch on them if you, if you, if we have the time. I mean, I don't.
I'd like to hear him while you're gonna vote.
Okay, um, one of the, one of the requirements on, that we're seeking is, uh, dead-end streets that we provided with a turnaround, having a hundred-foot di- closed diameter on it. And way back when we were talking, was felt that as long as we could provide that circulation through, through our site, that would accommodate the same function as, as the turnaround. So that's what we'd be seeking a waiver on that regard. Catch basins, another waiver, um, is, uh, uh, section 4A. Catch basins require some space at 400-foot increments along the roadway. We're sheet flowing all of the, all the drains across our site, picking it up and treating it. So we were asking for a waiver for catch basins. We didn't think they'd be in need since we're picking up and managing all stormwater.
Can you address how that might affect icing of parking lots in the winter? You know, if you're not picking up the water and it's sheeting across the parking lots, how, how will you address that for safety of the, uh, occupants of the buildings and visitors? You know, during a, a rainstorm that freezes when it hits the ground, if, if you have catch basins, you're catching a lot of that water, it's coming to the catch basin, so now it's sheeting how many feet?
Well, in lower, in lower the catch basins, we're actually picking like that, each one of those two little rain guidance. So it would be one of the mechanisms to pick up the water, you know. And it's this, in an area, not allowing to have the sheet across the entire parking lot. So that's what we're, that's what our mitigation would be in, in that particular area there. And we would also be, um, maintaining, maintaining that area as well. So whether we put salt on it, sand, salt mixture, whatever, in addition to, um, those things, that, that would be our obligation to, to do. The town requires the roadway to have two six-inch courses of gravel and two, um, two courses of class one, the two minutes concrete, one and three-quarter inches on the binder and one and a quarter on the top. I think that our cross-section for our parking lot is a little, little beefier than that. We use 12 inches of gravel, four inches of dense grating. And then we're using, uh, I think, uh, a one-and-a-half inch top course on a two-inch binder. So we've really upgraded the pavement cross-section a little bit and that's typically what, what our office designs for a pavement cross-section. Street lights is what are, what's required also on the street, but we have some, some lighting shown at, at points along the parking lot. I don't know if I can even see them on here, which plan they're on. But we have, uh, we have site lighting and some site lighting in the parking lot along the edges and down, and down the center. She's a can't.
I see them.
There they are here, there's a sign right here.
There's a star at each of the islands in the middle. I don't see them along the north side, the stars.
Yeah, that's because I think we changed those and put them just down the center, down the center islands as opposed to, um, the outside light. That was a, that was an older, that was an older scheme where we had them on the outside. I think we only have them down the center.
Okay, and I don't see any on the access drive as well.
There are none on the, there are none on the access drive.
No.
There were none really on Thatcher Lane. So we just, we just tried to put the minimum amount of lighting in the, uh, in the parking lot that would also light up a little bit on the street, but not too, too much. The sign will be lit, the sign will be lit down here. Um, we'll have some, we'll have the, a light here. I thought there was another one here, but I guess I'm wrong.
I see, I see four. I don't see any. This is just addressing Phase One anyways, 'cause I don't see any near Phase Two's building.
That's correct. It is only addressing Phase One, right? In default, in the main parking lot.
Yeah, but there'll be additional lighting once that second building is gonna be built, I suppose.
Yes.
So that's fine.
There's five, yeah. Um, they talked about street trees. We didn't show, we didn't show s- street trees on this area. There, there's land, there are some trees in this piece, in this piece of land, not any specimen trees. But we thought that the, uh, the landscaping plan would, would suffice for, uh, in lower than the street trees. There's just not, there's not much room to put any trees in it. There's only a three-foot, there's only a three-foot grading band between the, uh, between the layout line and the, the other town-owned property over here. So we don't really have too much room.
Getting back to lighting, will there be wall packs on the buildings?
Yes, there will, I believe the architectural plan showed those.
Sides and rear first door. I think you'll see them on the.
Page five or 14.
Okay. Thank you.
Subdivision rules also call for sidewalks, um, that really don't have a place to go in a residential subdivision. They would, they might be more suitable than industrial subdivision. But we have wa- we have our pedestrian access facilities around the building and they provide reasonable access to the parking spaces within the, uh, within the parking lot. Um, the subdivision, the subdivision regs also call for monumentation to be, call for the roadway to be bounded. Um, where we can set a bound, we'll set a bound, but in the middle of the pavement, we, we just proposed to put PKs, nails in the, uh, in the, in the pavement. So at that point right there would be one to be, I think that would be one, there might be another one back there. Every place we can put a bound, we, we would place them. And those were really the, uh, the limits of the waivers. They weren't too. They weren't too, uh, too onerous to request, I don't think. And I think it, they're more technical in nature than anything else.
And signage design, is that also included?
Sheet seven.
Sheet seven?
Yeah, we showed the signage and, and what it would be.
Where's that going?
Okay.
Where are you placing the sign?
That sign is placed right here in the front of the, right here in the front, I think sheet five, um. Right, show that, please? Sheet six shows it right here.
That's for that building, but the, what about Phase Two's building, signage for that, are you?
We hadn't planned for it yet.
How about a- access signage, like to your extension, any signage there?
Wayfinding to, to come down to it, or?
Just who's there, you know? Like, I didn't know if you're putting something up at, at the cul-de-sac area where you enter.
Yes, they, they have one, uh, USDA has, uh, a couple of requirements for signs, uh, but they're all, you know, whatever, whatever allowed by zoning first of all. But, uh, they, they do request there'd be total of three signs. The latter sign they just discussed, uh, one that, uh, like you're asking about further up toward the cul-de-sac and then one on the building, on the face of the building, showing to the public. And they're not large in any way, their, their requirements are modest. They just wanna demonstrate that it's a public building.
This is a public hearing, is there any public wants to speak?
Yes, good evening. My name is George Rogers.
Would you come up and use the mic?
Good evening. My name is George Rogers. I'm a consultant representing AD Makepeace Company this evening. And I'm just here to report to you that we are working with representatives of Fort Fairfield on the drainage and easement issues. And the preliminary discussions were all positive. We're all looking for the results to be a win-win situation for both parties, which has been reported by Mr. Mansfield and Mr. Madden this morning, this evening. I'm just confirming that. And hopefully we'll have this resolved, uh, you know, within the next 30 days, I'm hoping.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
George, just before you leave, the waivers that Bill Madden talked about, from what I heard him list, I didn't see any issues with those with the exception of the one that had to do with the cul-de-sac. Since there isn't any cul-de-sac, my suggestion would be that the semicircle at the end of the parking area be paved under Phase One, because that would complete the loop. It would, it would take the place of the circle that would normally be the place where somebody would turn around completely rather than having to pass through where cars are parked. Uh, the second reason for paving that would be that in the event something happens and Phase Two never happens, at least you've got that piece, that small piece of paving completed. That's the only thing in the waivers that I would suggest.
So you're talking about this piece on your chart?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, what kind of turnaround do you think on the review?
When do you wanna meet again?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to determine, what we should continue to.
Well, I'll, I'll start the review this week, um, and as soon as I get the review done, I'll make an appointment with Bill and, uh, we can, we can sit down and go over them. So at least we've got as much squared away as we can. So if you set the date for the continuation of the hearing, assuming it's not within the next.
It's not tomorrow.
Tomorrow or the next day, I should have the report done for you. Did have one other question on the building, just wanting, is that a single-story building?
It is.
Wooden trusses that make up the roof?
Correct, yes.
Well, that's gonna be a lot of wood.
Yeah, we were just talking about, I was talking with the architect and the engineer. Uh, and I have to go, uh, talk to a truck manufacturer now. It's a six pitch.
No.
Does look like a tall hat, doesn't it?
No reason for maybe having a, a second floor in a portion of that that could be used?
Want me to bring you the architect? You can, uh, have a chat with him too, or bring him down.
I'm, I'm not an architect. The architect is sitting right over there.
Oh, is that, oh, excuse me, sorry. You know how engineers.
It just, it just seemed like an awful big surface, but not only a single story. It's a nice-looking building, don't get me wrong. But it just seemed like an awful surface area with nothing in it but airspace, that's all.
I, uh, I, I hear you, Charlie. Uh, you know, Bill mentioned that to me the first time I, I sent him a picture of it too. I don't, I don't question the architects too much anymore.
Place for a conference room, maybe a couple of dormal windows here and there, something like that?
That's.
Not my call.
The only ones are one. Uh, June 12th seem reasonable? Responses and?
Yeah.
Any questions, any, uh, desire for more information, or the?
How tall's that tower up there?
The cell tower?
Yeah.
Thought, thought we went through this, oh, it turns to 190?
The height of the tower?
Yeah.
Yeah, 190 feet.
So that building is in the fall zone?
It's never gonna fall, is it? Say it again.
There's no record of any of them. Um, but yes, that, that tower, that tower comes down the highway or, uh, all the way over to Tyre Warehouse or wherever it's gonna go.
Have there been nothing for a vote for this evening or have you been watching it continued to June 12th?
No move?
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a good one. Thank you.
You got little kids?
Hello, we got babies.
Thirty-one.
You and your grandkids?
Oh, yeah.
Where does that, where does that go to school?
You see the, uh, the schedule listed on your attendance is also.
Little light reading.
Question if you'd like to undertake a review of the rules and regs and?
Can I ask a question? Uh, last meeting we talked about, uh, types of construction materials. And they're itemized and, and the first words, and I don't have it in front of me, but Mr. Rowley, I think, recited it and said the types of materials, natural materials, and then the last item was steel.
It's metal, actually.
Metal.
Metal.
If you don't wanna remove it, can we make some type of an adjustment or a change? The board? By that I mean, could we then say wood, stone, blah, 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 and metal in the industrial parks of Wareham? Can we do that without going?
I don't think, I don't think it should be in the same sentence with natural materials.
Well, but I'm just saying, so it's there already. So my question is, is can we just add some verbiage?
Well, that's a.
And then that gives us, or gives Mr., our town planner, when he gives the list of the materials to the applicants, he can say, please note, if you're in the industrial parks, this is one of the approved materials. If you're outside of the industrial park, this is not one of the approved materials.
Are you familiar with the building on Main Street? It has the, uh, the, uh, cornice that has metal in it. Set the, uh, intersection with Main and Center Street.
I don't know what Center Street is.
Anyway, there's, there's a building on Main Street that has, has metal in the facade. So you'd make that one illegal if you were to say no metal outside of the industrial park.
No, you wouldn't.
That's your book.
Be pre-existing non-conforming.
Yeah, it's pre-existing non-conforming. It does not become illegal. I'm talking about new construction.
The overhang, yes.
Mr. Town Planner, I'm talking about new construction, new buildings, proposed buildings.
Well, I'm saying that metal can be a, a material that, that fits in the, the, uh, the design.
It's not.
Well, it could be stainless steel. I mean, it, it depends on what metal you, I mean, I think that might refer into butter buildings.
Well, they call them metal space buildings.
Yes. So I wanna go back to my original question. Can verbiage be added without asking for, um, town meeting, vote on it? town meeting, vote on it? Can this board add verbiage to that list? And if so, could we limit where metal buildings are built?
I imagine you could put a suggestion in the rules and regs, but other than that.
Suggestions.
The rules and regulations are the only thing you have outside of town meeting.
If you wanted to fine tune that, that's town meeting action.
Alright, so what could you do so that we don't have to battle this ridiculous battle week in and week out where people are trying to build industrial buildings in our residential areas?
Well, maybe you add to the zoning bylaw, the committee adds that metal, the facades and metal buildings will be.
Restricted.
In a way, in some other way, a way not, you know, not corrugated steel, like.
I mean, that, that building that you referred to, if that was gonna be built today, that would not be a metal building.
Well, it could still be a metal building, but it could have.
I mean, I'm not, I'm talking about metal siding without windows and I'm, I know that some metal roofing materials are very decorative and nice-looking, but it's just my opinion, I think we're not doing the residents of this town or the town any favors if we continue to allow metal buildings be built in residential areas or on our main thoroughfares. The appearance of them are not good, they certainly don't lend themselves to what I would consider good retail or office applications. The way they look. I don't think we're doing a good job. That's just my opinion and I, I think there's a place for metal buildings, industrial parks, on properties that aren't visible, whatever. But the buildings that we're seeing week in and week out, I think, are, in my estimation, unacceptable. We're not helping this town move forward. We're not helping this town improve. We're just continuing to approve what the regulations say because we just don't wanna stand up and ask for more. My, I, I, I think you're, to, to get to your point about how to, to modify this, I think that you should be specific as to what you don't want, which is corrugated metal space buildings in the commercial districts.
Commercial districts or residential areas where, you know, there might be some type of a zoning.
Adjacent to residential areas.
Also, there are, there are other factors, if I may. The current example that, and I have not been part of the deliberations from the beginning, there's a twenty, or twenty-seven oh seven Cranberry Highway project. But gentleman fixing awnings or putting stripes on the building, excuse me, is like, is putting lipstick on a pig, excuse me, I don't mean it that way, but that's, that building is horribly out of scale. And the makeup on it isn't gonna solve the problem, I think if there, is there any way that the board can direct or guide the applicant towards, in this example, a hundred feet by seventy-four foot box? If that were broken up into two or three masses? If the pitch of the roof would change from two and a half to twelve to four or six and twelve? If the garage doors were reduced, why do they need sixteen-foot doors? Twelve-foot doors would bring the scale down, the, the, I, I took some time around that property and there's no house bigger than twenty by thirty, fifteen by twenty feet tall. And, and so I would like to see what is being added. Sure, if they need a hundred by seventy-four foot footprint, okay, they have to have it. But do we have any authority to suggest to them that break it up into, instead of one big mass?
Yes, you do, under the Architectural Design Guidelines, which is section seven sixty-four, it has roof lines and building facade articulation, I think, which are intended to break up the.
So at what point, as, as I said, I never, I did not sit in the early days of this project, but at what point does the board have the authority to say? And, and, and let me ask also with, with the same question, the gentleman who was making the presentation, the engineer, looked at me and said, tell me what you want us to do, well, we don't wanna tell them what to do, but we could suggest. And that's why I got, I sent you that sketch, you know, to go, to plunk a hundred-foot long by seventy-foot four-wide box across from a, a bunch of houses that are no bigger than twenty-five by thirty or twenty feet tall. It's just visually chaotic and, and as Bob pointed out earlier, on the backside, there may be a develop, a residential development later and what will they be looking at? I guess now it's too late, right, it's gonna be that hundred-foot long box, right? We couldn't ask them to reconsider the, the massing of the structure?
Under the, the conditions of the, of the approval, you have a, a review again of the, of the building.
Don't wanna make life hard for them either, but I'm, I'm trying to learn the process and at what point?
At, at the point, I think you wanna do it during the, the hearing process.
The beginning.
And, yeah, something like that, you wanna get out right, right up front.
Cause part of their submission includes their architectural renderings, so we wanna do it right then, correct?
Correct. And based on standards.
Do it before you take their, their stuff in, so it's not gonna fly.
Well, I, that's what I thought was part of the process, I thought you got the plans and Charlie got to see all of this before it was truly accepted so that you could say, this doesn't meet the standards, or this isn't what we're looking for anymore.
Well, this is kind of, this is kind of, like you said, anymore, so this is kind of.
Well, I feel very comfortable saying that because I think the things, the ways of the past have not helped this town. And sadly, we've got these albatrosses scattered throughout the town now that we're gonna live with until the next generation, until they deteriorate and fall down. And that's pretty sad, cause the town can't move forward in a positive way with the type of construction we have, we have allowed and we continue to allow.
So I, I think what you want is to have stronger design standards rather than just guidelines.
Excuse me, what's the process for, for example, you, you, one could suggest roof pitches, not, not less, not less than six and twelve or four and twelve? Is that possible to do for, without having to go through a very complicated process? And other, and is.
If you wanna change the, the regulations and have design standards, you have to include that, you have to let everybody know beforehand what those design standards are.
That has to be approved at town meeting though.
Yeah, and that goes to town meeting as a.
So what can we do now, what can we do today?
What you could do today is, is have design guidelines that aren't within, that aren't within the zoning but are not necessarily enforceable.
Well, that would help do initially, sure.
Anything's better than what we have.
And what those would do would clarify, under your rules and regulations, what you're intending to do.
But we can't put verbiage and say that, we can limit where these metal box buildings can be built without town meeting, is, can we do that?
I think you, you could do. Section fifteen forty-two says the proposed development is supposed to visually relate to its environment and the appropriate scale, massing, height.
Yeah.
To ensure the architecture is in harmony with the natural environment and the neighborhood. So you could maybe take that language and say, th- th- these are the design standards, you know, that we think.
Well, the problem with that is, is just what happened with this one on twenty-seven oh seven. That engineer threw it in our face and said, this building is similar to the gas, propane gas company's building.
Right across the street.
What I wanted to say was, that is an inappropriate building and all we're gonna allow you to do is continue to be building inappropriate buildings, I, I think what I wanna do is have the town planner meet with every applicant and say, these are what we're hoping for standards from you. And you can't throw those other buildings in our face cause we are no longer interested in approving that type of building. What was done was done, what's today is today.
So would you suggest anything over a certain length, could it have a staggered facade?
It just, it depends on the site, it depends on the environment, I, I'd be happy to sit with, with Ken and.
But there's no, we just, the board just approved seventy-four hundred square feet across from fifteen hundred square foot houses. Those aren't similar.
No, they're not similar, but it's a commercial lot, so you've got a zoning issue.
No.
They could have built a building much different than that.
How do we write an article to take space buildings, metal space buildings, out of commercial areas, adjacent to residential, and just put them into the industrial parks, how do you word that?
You just did.
I don't think the idea is to take a metal building out, is to get rid of the metal facade.
Correct.
You still can have a wood or metal frame similar structure, you just want it to look nice.
Yeah, and it's gotta have a roof line that doesn't look like a roller skating rink, you know, two and a half, two and a half pitches, just, that's horrible.
There should be a compatibility, not, not only scale, height, but also materials. And, and you're, you're correct, of course, if it's, if it's a, if it's a commercial zone, it's different than residential, but I, I, I think that, permit me, I mean, I know I'm new here, so I, but, but I, I think that the board should say, put our foot down and say, materials for this area are thus and thus, I mean, when you have a residential scale, residential fabric, it doesn't sit to, to impose on that, as, as Mike says, a metal. The metal building in itself is not bad, it's just where it's located and how it's being used. And, but the essential elements are scale, proportions and, and the environment.
And you gotta, you gotta rewrite that and put that in there.
But we already have language that we can hang our hat on, yet we continue not wanting to do that. We have language that Bob just read that says that, we can enforce that. It must be similar, like-kind and quality materials to the area where that property is being built.
That's not what it says.
And you can't pick out that one building.
It doesn't say that. Read, read that again. About the area.
Proposed development shall visually relate to its environment. Consideration shall be given to appropriate scale, massing and height to ensure that the architecture shall be in harmony with the surrounding natural environment and neighborhood.
Okay.
So environment, so that's surrounded by all houses except for that one metal building that was previously approved. So do you allow your applicant to hang his hat on that one building or the other twenty across the street? Who should you really be looking out for?
It's the neighborhood.
Right.
I disagree with you, you, why you selling commercial lots up and down the highway? You've got, you've got the generator place, you've got McDuffie's place, you've got them all down.
They were all old and previously approved, so does that mean you're gonna continue that, cause that's what you wanna see?
No, no, I think you have to word it, I think you have to word it better than that, oh, it'll need the neighborhood.
No, I think this board has to get some backbone and stand up and say, no more. And if you're for that, then evidently you just love what you see.
There used to be a driver.
You know, you talk about the buildings that you just mentioned, they're scrapyards, every one of them. And they're ve- very visible to anyone who visits our town. So let's see, when I see that the first time, boy, this is the town I wanna live in. I don't think so.
I'll answer John's question, since the eyes. Whatever you're gonna do obviously has to go through town meeting, cause you gotta be, you're basically rewriting the zoning, which you can do. You have a master plan which is supposed to be going into effect. One of the first things to do, you take a section of master plan, which gives you guidance and direction of what you town, what you want for your town. So basically, at this point here in time, it's May, you've got till September. It's up to this board to put a subcommittee together and start rewriting the zoning bylaws as I like to see it. You know, with Ken, and if Manuel has time and wants to do some of the guideline stuff, you can do that. You've got.
I'd be happy to.
You've got three to four months, it's not gonna happen any other way.
Right, and it's not, and it's not a lot of pages, right?
No, it's not pages, it's just a matter of, you can, you can choose, but this board has to step up and do it. We've talked about this when I was on the board, you know, five, six years ago. We never took the time to do it, cause it's work.
And I don't think.
We're all volunteers and it's hard.
I don't think we're reinventing the wheel, I think there's probably twenty towns around us that have already done it and we can take a peek at theirs.
That's what I'm saying.
Cause they're not, they're not allowing what we allow.
Just gotta rewrite a couple of these articles, the, the problem is, is when the applicants come in, they're gonna hand them all the stuff. You say, well, I suggested you do this and I suggested you do that, and I say, well, we used your guidelines and it meets, it meets it within reason. And, and that's the answer, that's what the answer's gonna be, and they're not wrong, because it says.
There are other.
Metal, wood, brick, what he's.
There are other situations, like, I voted no on twenty-seven oh seven because I'm concerned about safety. There is no way that trucks and trailers and whatever are entering and exiting that building without causing a possible vehicle accident or a pedestrian being hurt. Yet we approved it knowing that.
You didn't approve it.
No, but we, I'm on the board, we approved it knowing that that is absolutely a possibility.
I think you got a possibility with all these, all these buildings up and down Cranberry Highway. A lot of those businesses, the U-Haul place there, the, the welder shop there, you see those U-Hauls pulling it out of there?
Yeah.
That's an accident waiting to happen, but needless to say, it's gotta be rewritten. So, I mean, you're, you're exactly right, you gotta spend some time and, and go over, and just change the wording a little bit.
Ken could probably get.
But I have no problem, to be perfectly honest with you, taking metal space buildings out of the, out of the adjacent to neighborhoods and put them in the, put them in the industrial park.
Right, I don't think you're hurting anybody.
And I'm not picking on a, a star building or a Butler building or, or any of the manufacturers.
They all have their use.
But let's face it, the welding shop and then, and then these other shops, that's what they are, they're a metal space building.
Yeah, but they all have their uses, it's fine, but they just shouldn't be the first thing you see when you come to town and Ken, I, I'm sure Ken has experience in other towns and he could probably get us pages from other towns, which I think will guide us so that it doesn't become a process that we start from scratch.
Not a lot of, uh.
Back when we, when the last zoning rewrite went in and created general commercial, there was also reference to a neighborhood commercial that was kind of a placeholder, didn't really get explained or executed. I always saw that as a way to create a buffer from more intense uses down to residential, this would be a, a good example where you, you put, you try to place uses there that are not high traffic, not, not high impact to the neighborhood.
We approved a fifty-four hundred square foot dental office for that property, that was a good use. That building would have been, you know, aesthetically pleasing, the hours would have been appropriate, the use was appropriate. And we've gone from that to an industrial building on our main road. Which, we don't even know what the tenants are yet.
Same owner though.
Right.
I suggest you spend some time, go look at the cake card commission, how they run cake card now. And below the rules and regulations, it's probably more draconian than you, where you wanna go.
Right.
Charlie can give you some information, since there's a lot of work done in Mashpee, which is a typical example of a farm town virtually developing into a very large retail and light industry town. You don't have to go very far for this, you just have to read through it. We did the sign by law very quickly, I took Falmouth's sign by law. I just cut a page, I think.
Yeah.
It took me two months to read that one, instead of two years.
You wanna spend the time and do it.
George, there's, there's a lot in the zoning bylaw right now that could have been looked at as a part of the twenty-seven oh seven process. And if you look at seven sixty-four, this is all the design standards for all commercial districts. Goes through roof forms, windows, exterior materials, building facade articulation, transition lines, building entries, all that stuff is there.
So why don't we give it to all the applicants?
I, I think that, to be very honest with you, I think as a board, you need to look through it and decide whether or not you can work with it. I'm not convinced without hearing it from town council that you can say that you will not allow any metal buildings anywhere except in industrial zone. Any more than you could say, I don't like cedar shingles on any houses, so I'm gonna say you can't put cedar shingles anywhere in town. I don't think you can do that. But what you can do is take these guidelines and apply the guidelines, a metal building is nothing but a structure when you get right down to it, but you can shape that and you can make it conform and the idea that the building should fit the neighborhood makes an awful lot of sense. Is it gonna cost somebody a little bit of money? Yeah. But it, it will pull out of the woodwork a little bit of those people who don't wanna spend the money and they wanna just put the cheapest thing possible and go. to spend the money and they want to just put the cheapest thing possible and go, go away. I think the basis for it is already here, but I think you need to take the time to look at it and read it through as a board and decide whether or not it really says what you want it to say. And I, the section you read, Ken, I think it was in 15 something? It perhaps should be repeated in the commercial district regulations so that it becomes something that people read right off the top of the, right off the very first thing they look at in the commercial district. I think you've got the basis for it here.
Yeah, the section that I didn't read was the one that said, "The building should reflect the historic Southern New England architecture." This building probably didn't qualify for that.
You don't think so?
No, just making a guess. That is, that is a design standard.
I'll make one little comment. In the last two years, I'd say, this is the first time, sorry, I'm mic'd up, this is the first time that I can remember actually going through the zoning bylaws and going from one piece to another. You have people sitting at that desk there, they pick out whatever they want that will work for them. They ignore everything else. As a board here, and I'll include myself just because I sit here, we don't do the job because when they say this, you don't have a comeback saying, "Well, this section here, the zoning bylaw says this." This is the first time in at least two years I've seen that happen, where someone actually has come back and say, "Well, that's actually not the case," you hear something else. So you're not being prepared enough for this. That's just, I'm not sure how the public responded tonight when they see, listen to it, but that's what I picked up.
I'd like to see many decent design standards, design guidelines, but we'll see what we can find in the bylaw that will support those, but I think that we should be putting them out there.
I'll be happy to work with Ken.
Even, you know, we don't have to wait till we do a zoning bylaw, we can design, do design standards now. And when I had the changes that I had proposed, I had the sides and I said, "I don't know what to say about the front." And I think people without an architectural background, I didn't know what, how you would describe how I want you to redo those plans without telling you specifically what to do, but we don't want to design it for people and there must be some language you can say that will get you there without designing it.
Bob, that's the dilemma, you know, oral communication doesn't serve well when you're trying to describe visual, visual aspects and, but that's, but, but I do think, and I, I worked for many years on Nantucket, I think I mentioned it to someone before. Nantucket has a wonderful, wonderful design guide for architects, engineers, but primarily for the designers and, and it, it covers, it doesn't say specifically, "You must have a door here," or, but it makes you aware, makes the designer aware of what is important about the, the Nantucket feeling, the scale of the houses, their relationship to each other, their relationship to the land, contouring, and then of course, the, the, the use of materials. They do limit the materials there. So there's very, it's very strict in terms of, of the scope, but something like that I think would help us a lot. I'd be happy to work with Ken on it, to come up with some, initially starting off with some basic design guides. For example, the, the one thing that is horrible in Wareham is so many almost flat roofs, those two and 12 pitches, it, it's just not a place you want to live in. It's, the, the, the blocking is, the, the lack of sensitivity to the massing and to the, to the neighborhoods. So I think with some very simple, I shouldn't say simple, but basic start, I think we can start, I'd love to work with you on it.
Sounds great.
So I, I don't know if it's appropriate to do this, but I had on my list the back doors, the 16 feet to have the plan show or reduction. I thought it was 13 feet, if it's 12 feet, whatever it is, because the people in the back and Ken's can see part of those buildings even through the trees, those...
I did a quick sketch just to show you the proposed and the, and the, how the, how if you lower the doors and you change the roof pitch, how the, and, and break the mass, you're just a very quick sketch. It changes the feeling completely, I don't know if Ken has it with, you know, and that's not difficult and, and it wouldn't add too much money to the project, you know, it's...
Probably what they save on doors would pay for the roof.
There you go. You know, it's, changing the roof pitch, lowering the doors.
I'm, I'm good.
I mean, unless your empty and trash come back, because I don't know why you need a 16 foot door.
Add to the conditions, we did the, the lowering of the overhead doors and increasing the pitch.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two, I don't know what the pitch is.
Pitch of the existing building was two and a half to 12.
Or the one here.
The one up, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, two and a half to 12, it's horrible.
That's, that's not even a barn, it's a roller derby.
George, could I say something about that? It bothers me a little bit that if we start introducing into the conditions, things that were not really debated at the public hearing.
See, that's...
I might have thought about the 16 foot doors, but nobody really questioned it or challenged them on it and they never gave a reason why. I'd be very cautious about writing things that did not get a part of the public discourse.
I mean, that's kind of my concern generally is, when you want to make changes...
Once you put together the guideline of the proposal that Ken's preparing for them, those doors won't be an issue anymore.
When you start talking changes to somebody's design, you need to do it right up front. You can't wait until the end of the process to start throwing this stuff out there.
It would, it would help to keep the hearing open even while you're debating the conditions so that they would be here and if they challenge the condition, at least you'd have some discussion back and forth. Closing the hearing, a lot of times you can do it because you know that's the end of it, but then you have to be careful about how much more you can introduce into the discussion.
Right.
We, we tried to undertake that a few times and many of the applicants are pressing you to close the hearing and it's, I mean, these particular folks, I think they didn't say it, but I think they were...
That's, that's okay, but then they have to understand that what's been said is the way that the conditions were a bit read and if they don't like what you do, then they can appeal it. But I'm just saying, I think you need to be careful about things that weren't debated and discussed as a part of the general discussion, that's all.
Probably a little more discussion before the hearing is closed as to what the process is going to be.
I'd just make a comment, I don't believe you're going to see 2707 build anything with the, what was approved tonight, with the conditions.
Right.
I mean, anybody that's looking realistically at what you gave them, there's nobody that can run a business in any of those, in those five or six feet of places. It's just, I'm sorry, but I just can't see anybody coming from the retail world and, you know, in light manufacturing and stuff, among other things. I would never rent anything with those conditions, I couldn't run my business. So I think you're going to find they're going to come back and, I don't know what, I don't know what they're going to do, but that doesn't work. Doesn't work at all.
Well, if that's the way they designed it, I mean, foolish design.
All I'm saying is just, the conditions, you know, with vehicles inside the building and all these other restrictions and...
They asked for that.
I know, but therefore, sometimes when someone does something foolish, you have to help them out as well.
We tried to help.
I know, but the bottom line is, they've got something now that they can't use.
Yeah.
Anything further?
Nope.
Ken, you have any? It's time to read your 20-page report now. The, we have a couple of meetings coming up, the Tremont Nail Factory presentation coming up next, next Wednesday? The 30th, I thought.
30th, I think.
And June 3rd, Saturday morning for the kickoff on the master plan. We're going to try out a Saturday morning meeting, see how it works, if, depending on how it, it, it turn out, we may have another evening meeting.
Depends on the weather, I imagine.
The weather as well.
If it's Saturday like this, I'm figuring...
Is it the 31st or the 30th?
Tell me to pass this on.
I got the 31st, when is the nail factory? I think it's the 31st.
Would you care to make a motion?
It was in the, it was in the minutes. It was in the minutes tonight, you'll see it.
I just comment on the, I think the thing on the rules and regulations could be good to do, but I'm thinking we should be a little more involved in the zoning because these things that we're talking about keep coming up and now's the time, so if we could, I would first look at the zoning issues and make some notes as to those sections of the zoning bylaw that we've run across that are issues like the design standard stuff that...
And can't, seriously, can't we, Ken, can we request that you give those to every applicant? When they come in for their applications to pick them up, not when they've completed their applications. It's part of the package they pick up.
Design guidelines, oh yeah.
Yeah. Can we attach those to that and say?
To the application...
Here's your paperwork.
We could do that.
I mean, even if it just helps 50% of the applicants, you have a conscience and try to do something that's good for them, but also good for the town, that would be a good improvement.
It, it's like having the checklist that we have in the current, current applications. So the checklist is the design guidelines and conformance with them.
Yeah.
Under the site plan review.
Can we do that? Can you do that? Attach them, that'd be good. Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Sir, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed meeting adjourned at 10:20.